That's all right. So this meeting was called, uh, called to order and agenda of the meeting adopted and circulated at, uh, six, uh, six P M. on September, December twelfth, committee of the whole meeting. And I guess we're gonna go right down to four point, four point four one. Uh, twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four emergency plan, administrative report and the, uh, emergency plan. So I guess, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll go through the plan. I guess, how is this, were you gonna speak to this?
Sure. Um, okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe we'll get underway with, uh, essentially, uh, we're required to update the, um, the emergency plan, uh, on an annual basis. And, uh, this is exactly what this is. Mostly, it's, uh, uh, some, um, housekeeping items, things like the changing of the, um, the location of the E O C, um, also some updates to some of the names and the contacts and some of the equipment lists. And, uh, Ken and Shelley here to, uh, to present or ask, answer any questions you may have on it specifically. But, uh, the, uh, the, the plan in detail is attached as well. It's, it's an update of the existing plan.
Mayor, we went through this pretty thoroughly, did we not, already?
Uh, I guess they-
In the separate meeting?
Well, they talked about it, but they never had this document of the plan there.
Oh, okay.
So that's what's attached?
Well, this is the standard document that we had previously as well, is it not? Just a matter of filling in the template for new dates and-
Uh, maybe just come up and-
Approval of the plan.
So the emergency plan template that-
You should probably say your name and-
Pardon me? Do you want me to say my name?
Say, yeah. And Ken needs to say his name since he's up there.
Shelley Napier, Napier Consulting.
And Ken Azarenski Municipal Emergency Coordinator.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Um, the, the template that you're using was updated last year. It was brand new and all information in it made, it was, uh, up to provincial standard. Actually, it exceeded it. So it, um, it was new. Uh, every two years, I go through and add anything that has changed. There was no changes to the provincial legislation, regulation, or standard, um, between twenty-three and what we're submitting for twenty-four. The changes that were, um, were made were due to the provincial election with, uh, new name changes to the government. For example, Manitoba Infrastructure is now called Transportation and Infrastructure. Um, it's, instead of, uh, climate, it's Climate and Environment. Those types of changes. There's been some staff changes, obviously, and there was just staff changes to the government side. All of that was updated. Um, other than that, there hasn't been anything major. Uh, everything is re, as far as Ken and I are concerned, is ready to go to the province.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No?
No, I think we went through this pretty clearly before, I recall. And, uh, I see made some changes for, you know, adding our new C A O in and that kind of thing.
Yes.
So, see, the contacts have changed and that. So, no, it looks good. Looks good to me.
Yeah, that's, if that's the only changes, I'm, I'm good with it.
Sure. Okay, that's good, 'cause I got some questions. So I guess it talks about uh, E O C kits that prepared. Are they prepared or not? Do we still have to prepare?
Those, those E O C kits are something that would have to be prepared.
Okay.
They were submitted in my twenty twenty-three budget, and I submitted my twenty twenty-four budget and asked for funds for those kits. Once again, last time they weren't addressed.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's what you're waiting for? There's funds for those kits?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's part of my budget. It was, as I mentioned, it was submitted in twenty twenty-three without, uh, uh, without being granted.
Okay. 'Cause it sounds, uh, find it on the page here, one twenty-six.
It wasn't, were there, you were asking for five thousand for that, I believe, off the top of my head?
Uh, twenty-five hundred dollars to cover off, uh, complete expenditures, and it was likely gonna be below that. I just did that as contingency planning. Uh, in the event that there was any, uh, expenditures over and above that, it didn't go over the budget. But I, I have forecasted beneath that.
Mayor, what page did you say this kit is on?
Uh, I think it's one twenty-six I have. You know, they're talking about it on one twenty-six.
I'm, I'm looking at one twenty-six, and all I see is E O C equipment.
Uh, I couldn't even-
Uh, so Mr. Azarensky, what's in the kit?
Well, the kits, in essence, will, uh, help volunteers or participants that are, uh, involved in the functioning of different elements of the emergency plan do their role. It'll give them documentation that they can go by, as well as any resources they need to fill their specific volunteer role or assignment.
Okay.
So it's about refining the, uh, uh, the program for implementation, that it's very clear and concise when it comes to how this plan is gonna be put into motion. When it comes to an emergency, those volunteers can, uh, get a kit which is going to clearly set out their role and responsibility. So they're not worried about a broad spectrum like I would have to. They can focus specifically on what's important to them now and, uh-
We talked about, uh, uh, training volunteers.
Yes.
And, uh, we talked about getting volunteers and training volunteers. Now, have you budgeted for that?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And what did you budget for that, or what have you budgeted for that?
Uh, I think, uh, I put approximately three thousand dollars just for, uh, hosting events, uh, dealing with recruitment, and trying to identify people that might be, uh, uh, suitable volunteers in this capacity. Uh, and again, that's, that's a amount of money that I think would cover any and all contingencies and would probably be below.
Okay. Now, I remember when we did our emergency plan, we talked about Ms. Napier training. Or we're talking about recruitment, and you were gonna talk about that and training and so forth. So how do those two things go together?
I'm, uh, my training that I do for the groups that, uh, Ken will bring in is no cost to you. I come in and I do the training for them.
Okay.
Um, we do have a large-scale exercise. I'm sure council is aware of that.
Yeah.
We've got the date picked. It's going to be held in West St. Paul, and we do have to do some training. We're starting that in April. Um, and so there's no cost to the municipality for me to do that training. There's no cost for the municipality for me to do the exercise, 'cause it's part of the services that I provide.
Okay. And so, or should we be having our volunteers come to that training, or is it just for council?
No, we definitely-
For everybody?
Okay, so for example, um, what I think that the, the hope is, is to gather enough volunteers so that we can break them into two teams that will support the program. One would be the Emergency Operations Center team. We would train specifically for that.
Yeah.
Which is going to be a council exercise in the coming year. And the other team would be for the Reception Center. Now, as we have a date picked for the Reception Center exercise of June twelfth-
Okay.
We're going to start training that group. We've got to gather the volunteers, and we're going to start regionally training for them, because they're going to actually be sitting in a reception center, um, registering and doing care and control of the evacuees that are coming in, which will be community residents from all the municipalities.
Okay, so, the expectation then is that we start recruitment?
Yes.
Right.
And so-
We're looking at January.
I'm just trying to piece this together a little bit, so give me, give me, uh, so you've got June twelfth as, um, the Reception Center?
Exercise, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna write that in. And, um, we've gotta get volunteers there and identify those roles for, for that, right?
Yes.
Now, is that training for them, or are you training that, training them separately, or what else is it?
Well, I, I think before we worry about training, we have to identify. And we have to-
Absolutely.
We have to, we have to create, uh, a, uh, we, we have to create a number of, well, we have to create a system to first attract them. We have to have, uh, as mentioned in my budget, and I can, uh, just paraphrase a little bit right now. I think we have to make, uh, these roles appealing. We have to be able to train these people, retain them, motivate them to continue to be involved, and not just appear and realize that this isn't something that they wanna do and move on, and they would rather volunteer in a less serious capacity. So in order for this to be done, it has to be a municipal initiative on how are we going to, uh, uh, locate these? How are we gonna advertise that we require volunteers? Uh, and then, once we have this number, how do we determine and vet who's gonna be selected to operate in such a capacity? Because it isn't just about people saying, "Yes, I will." Do you, do, do you have the ability to do this? If you are subject to a child abuse registry check, we may eliminate people. There, there, there is a process to this. It isn't just about putting-
Is there overlap here, though? There seems like, it sounds like to me like there's a bit of an overlap here.
In relation to?
To what Ms. Napier's doing.
Well, once the, once we have them identified-
Yeah.
I will be running training on their specific roles.
You'll do the training.
Right. Um, I, I think that the best way to try and find volunteers is through, um, individual ask, word of mouth.
Yeah.
I think that, um, we need to do some marketing and promotion throughout the community. I think in January, I, I would recommend that we start looking at another open house. We got kinda hooped with, last time, it was weather and it was, you know, there was a whole bunch of other host of things. But, um, I, I know that it works to try and find them. Maybe going to some community groups or church groups to see if, you know, um, I went to, uh, when we were running a exercise in St. Pierre, um, I went to the church on the Sunday, and I, I asked them if anyone wanted to be a volunteer. We probably ended up with twenty. So there's ways to get them. Um, and there's actually some science behind what makes volunteers volun, wanna volunteer. And it's usually a direct ask rather than something in the newspaper. And so I, I know that in this community, there is wonderful people that would wanna help. And I think, once Ken identifies them, I'd like to do a three-hour basic course in, for everybody, and I can break it up if it's too long, in what the role of a Reception Center is and caring for community people, meeting more than just their basic need. And then we have to train into the roles, because the exercise is going to be quite intense. It's a full-scale exercise. We're going to have, we hope, a hundred volunteer evacuees with a host of problems coming in. And the staff at the desks that are going to be responsible to care for these people are gonna have to know what to do. And we have to get that ready by Ju, before June twelfth.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have two, we have a school here, we have-
Yes.
A church, a large church here.
Yes.
Well, actually, we have two private schools.
Do you have any Lions Clubs or Kiwanis or, no?
We have a Lions Club, but it's very small, very small, but-
You know, things like, um, you know-
Knights, Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus. They were, they were fabulous. I went to one of the fifty-five-plus buildings in another community, and I, I asked them, "What are you doing next Tuesday night?" And they said, "Well, it's our card and bingo night." And I said, "Well, how about coming out for a hot dog and coffee?" And we got them all there, and they just had a blast. I, I think that, you know, remember too, that the volunteers are gonna be also coming from St. Clement's and St. Andrews and East St. Paul. So it's going to be regionally. Um, and there's, we're also opening up a pet reception center adjacent to the hall, so we will be registering pets.
Okay.
So there's a, this is a very big exercise.
So are you going to be helping with, um, recruiting those volunteers, then?
Um, well, I, I think because Ken lives here and probably has a, a, a good handle on where to go, if my help is needed, I certainly would, would help.
Well, I'm talking about the broader, like, East St. Paul's and-
Their, each MEC is, each Municipal Emergency Coordinator is getting their own group of volunteers.
Okay.
We've asked that everybody come up with a minimum of twenty.
Okay.
Now, that twenty can be inclusive of you five, who can be, um, a, a volunteer evacuee and council. We're going to be doing interviews of you as well.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we, we're, if we have, if we have that, that would give us a hundred evacuees, volunteer evacuees, and that would be a good number to go through the Reception Center.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle on the stages of where we're going with this. And so you're identifying volunteers.
Yeah.
You want a budget for training, right?
Well, there, uh, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's removed from the approval process for this emergency plan, but-
Yeah.
Uh, I'd be willing to speak to, uh, the budget and the budgetary process and what I have envisioned-
Yeah, when that comes up, yeah.
When you guys, uh, have an opportunity to review my budget and prepare, and I've been, uh, given notice that I need to speak to it. But-
Okay.
Today, today I expected that we were going to be-
Just doing the emergency plan.
Going over the emergency plan and moving it forward. And, uh, it just was coincidental that I submitted my budget proposal today.
Well, there you go.
Yes.
Is it a coincidence? I don't know.
So what's the, what's the date for this, uh, emergency, uh?
June twelfth.
June twelfth?
Yeah.
It's going to be in the evening, and it's starting at six P M.
So that's Wednesday, June twelfth?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, sounds like you guys have got a good handle on it.
Ken and I work together, you know, quite well and, and quite frequently, so I don't have to bother you and he, you know, then he can go to you. But I, I believe that the plan, um, as it sits, has every piece of legislation, regulation, and standard that the province requires in their hundred and fifty-six pages is included in there.
Yeah.
Um, the, the template that's used is also used for St. Andrews and other surrounding areas, and all of them that have submitted have already gotten their approval back. I have no doubt that you're going to get your approval on the plan. We've done the exercise. I have the report ready to go to Dave, to the C A O, and that will, uh, complete that requirement for the year. So we're in good standing with all our provincial, uh, requirements to date.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, both of you.
So on, uh, mutual service agreements, I see that we have two in there from two thousand and eighteen, which is almost five years ago. I don't know, is that common, or should it be a little more current, these? That's a long time ago when these mutual aid agreements between St. Andrews and East St. Paul were made.
I thought I sent new ones last year. I can certainly look, Mayor, and make sure that those are updated. They're not required yearly, um, but they should be, every time there is an election, we certainly should be dealing with a new one. So I can forward them to, to Ken, to, the new ones to Ken-
Yeah.
-to make sure that they go forward with your signature for the new, for the updates.
So, uh, do you do it at the beginning of the election? 'Cause there's three then. There's two thousand and eighteen, two, uh, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one, so.
There's not a real, um, there's not a real, any specific time.
Oh, no, okay.
But I do believe that we, they should be no, they should be no later than twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Um, that we make sure. So we'll take a look at that twenty eighteen, and we'll get, we'll get an update ready for you.
Just more so, counsel, that present council is aware of it.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
And, uh, so the other thing that I see on here was about equipment, which is on, um, five fifty-four. Okay. So when, so this, I take it as equipment from key equipment listed, and it must be, I believe it's from East St. Paul. This is all that East St. Paul has for equip, is that right? Or what is all this?
No, this is all West, this is all-
No, this is all West St. Paul's.
Oh, West St. Paul, sorry, West St. Paul.
Yeah, we wouldn't have, why would we have theirs listed?
Yeah, sorry, I, oh, okay. So what's the location when it goes, like, on top? The first one is, uh, Speed Air, air compressor, you know, it's got the serial number, location, P W A C one.
Sure.
What does that mean?
Well, I would assume Public Works, and then A C one would be a classification of a location within their, uh, inventory of equipment.
So they have specific locations for this and-
I would imagine they have their equipment organized in a fashion that they have access to it.
I think A C one is Access Center.
Yeah, it's Access Center, and that it's just the different places that it's sitting.
Okay. So I, go ahead.
No, I just had that, just talking myself, sorry.
So I guess my question is, then, does Access Center and Fire Department and, um, Public Works know that this is the location, this equipment gotta be stored at, uh, when not in use? 'Cause I can envision that, you know, they'll come looking for this one piece of equipment, and it's, it's not there. It's somewhere else. They have it out in the backyard or, you know, start off in another location in the building. 'Cause I would imagine when we're asking for this, we don't wanna be looking around, wondering where it is. Is that correct?
Well, I would assume that by listing its location, that's where it would be. Now, if it wasn't there, uh, that'd be something on the accountability of the Public Works management to ensure that it is.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I, I guess maybe we should make sure that they're aware of that. If I could just speak to the C E O, just to-
Yeah, I can, I can share this. Uh, I'll be sure to share this with Public Works. Uh, I, I think, um, I think overall, there's, there's a good understanding where the equipment is. It's usually stored in the standard locations, but I can, I can share this with, uh, with the staff as well.
Same with Access Center and, uh-
Yeah. And, and generally, I can speak in general terms, obviously, that, uh, when this has to be acquired, if it isn't an emergency, it's going to be done so by Public Works staff. And if they say, "Okay, well, the tractor isn't in bay one, it's in bay two, and we put it there yesterday," they're gonna be able to locate it. Or the piece of machinery that we were using last week is outside, because we have another piece of machinery and it's placed being repaired. So it's gonna, there, it's gonna have specific knowledge. Uh, they're gonna have the specific knowledge required, uh, to, uh, to locate this. Uh, I can only imagine that this is all very expensive, uh, machinery used, uh, by municipal staff quite regularly, and it just doesn't go missing.
You know, I agree with you. I'm more or less thinking of those things that don't get used every day, like, maybe they get, like, there's mower bagger here, you know, as an example. You got a mower bagger down here, but maybe they don't use it every day, and they think that they're gonna store it in this one location. And then one day, someone does a cleanup and says, "You know what? Like, this is not the right location," and they're gonna move it. And they don't tell anybody about it, because they don't know that it's, that it's, uh, on this list of equipment, that key equipment that is, has a mutual agreement.
Yeah, well, that, I, you know, just answering that from, uh-
That's the only, that's the only thing I'm just wondering. It's, it's the equipment that you don't use every day, that people think that's there. I mean, you know, when you put stuff away in the house, do you think you always put it in the same place? One day you don't, and then you wonder where it is, so.
Well, I hope that they have a good accountability system. It seems like a professional organization, and they seem to get the work done, so I have some faith in them.
No, you know what, Ken? I do have faith in them, but if they don't know, they don't know. So that's why they should be aware of it, that this is important. And it's, it's not gonna be perfect, but at least they should have an understanding that it's, it's there. And that's what it is. Things do go awry.
'Cause this, this information was acquired ultimately from Public Works. This wasn't done by, uh, staff members to say, "That's where it should be." This is information that came from Public Works about its location. So let's hope that it's consistent.
I, I can share the list.
Yeah, you could, yeah. And, yeah, just to make them aware.
Absolutely.
You know. Uh, and the other one is on page, you know, it has to do with T V stations, page one seventy of this report. So, you know, I see there's A Channel, and, uh, you know, usually when there's an emergency, people go by, by, uh, what's, what's on the piece of paper. And A Channel isn't around anymore, and they'll start wondering, "Who's A Channel?"
Well, we can edit that.
Yeah. It's City T V, but that's the one, that's the other thing I see. Page one seventy of the report.
That must've missed us. I will have that changed.
Like A, like I see A Channel, uh, global, C K Y C T V.
We're looking at, uh, page one seventy of the two hundred and eighteen.
Yes, yeah.
Sixty-six.
Yeah. I don't know, the radio stations, uh, C B C or-
I see it on one, I see it on one sixty-six.
Yeah, we'll change it.
Yeah, Winnipeg Free Press, uh, Thompson or Thompson Citizen, is that a?
Well, I have to make them for the entire province, rather than region by region.
Oh, okay.
So you just have to pick and choose what you use.
Okay. Good.
When you're done, this mayor is-
Sure, go ahead now.
Well, I'll, I'll, just let you finish. Are you done?
I'm, I'm, yes, go ahead, yeah.
Ken here, or Mr. Azarensky, sorry. Um, is there anything that we, you know, 'cause you're, you're sort of explaining what these emergency kits are. Is there anything that, you know, we could use some of the, uh, R M's, uh, resources and print, like, do this almost sounds like it's a binder, like, is this some of this binder-type stuff?
It's a kit.
Yeah, it, it's, it'll be a, a, a physical box-
Okay.
-with the resources for that specific, uh, volunteer group or individual, uh, based on their role.
Yeah, I was just seeing if there's anything that the R M staff could, you know, help with at all, you know, or something with-
Well, you know, ultimately, when they, when it comes down to coordinating and making them up, there, there may be, there may be resources accessible through, uh, uh, what the, what the staff members can do in some of their roles without overtaxing them from their regular duties. But this is, uh, this, this is something that, uh, I budgeted to, be able to create other amongst the volunteers or myself.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to think of-
And acquiring some of the materials that we need, right? Like, I, I wouldn't wanna outsource anything that we can do ourselves.
Yeah.
Uh, if it, if it's about printing items, or, uh, we have access to a means of binding items, well, I would like to do that in-house before I take it anywhere else.
If I could, if I could just interject, I just want you to think about this. They're plastic, I just made ten. What I put in them for, for one of the R M's, I l, I take a plastic box with a snap-down lid, clear.
Uh-huh.
They would have maps. They would have part of the plan that they are using, which is already identified in the, in the, what they need. So if they're working in the E O C, they would need their E O C section, they would need their roles and responsibilities. They might need the legislation. That would go into either a folder or whatever Ken wanted, if they wanted to be spiral-bound. I would use a folder in case, that way you could just swap them in and out. You'd have stationery, and you might have a flash drive with the entire plan. The idea is, when Ken opens up the E O C, his staff comes in and they pull their kit with them. So they don't have, they can be as elaborate or as simple as possible, but you just wanna make sure that you have what you need in front of you and you're not chasing around for it. So there's a listing of what goes into each kit in the, in the plan.
Yeah. I, you know, I was just trying to, you know, put those out of the box and sort of, maybe, you know, maybe Ken's like, a little easier-
Yeah, absolutely.
And try to get, uh, get him some of that, the kits that, you know, they're, they're obviously are important, and, you know, we, uh, we sit up here and decide budgets, and sometimes, uh, you know, budgets, items get approved or not approved, so.
And, and just another, so I don't just think of the E O C, they need them for the Reception Center staff as well.
So since, since we're just discussing this, Councilor Campbell, uh, this, uh, these kits would be ready for, at the moment of an emergency.
Yeah.
The volunteers can come and acquire them. But in order to keep them secure and ready, I also have, uh, cabinets for, cabinets to be built in the E O C that will be secured, and these kits will be neatly organized within it.
That's in the fire hall?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, when the fire hall was originally constructed, it was built to suit what I proposed in the budget as an addition, that would function and enhance that room to be a, an organized D O C, housing these kits, secured, that they aren't tampered with. And then the time of emergency would just be unlocking, assigning, and, uh, getting ready to go. But that's part of the proposal that I submitted today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice.
So that they all sort of work in, uh, they work together.
Sure.
That the cabinets fit there for the kits. The kits need to be secured somewhere, so they're not, uh, being tampered with in the meantime, or disorganized.
Mm-hmm.
So when, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's a simple budget, but the elements of it are all about emergency preparedness and functioning out of time of need, and that it's just, everything is there, and we're organized, and we're ready to go.
Good. Councilor Campbell?
Yeah, this is a really good, uh, emergency response plan, and, uh, my question, and it's pretty detailed. Uh, I see that there's like fifteen schedules, uh, as part of the plan. And what I was wanting to know was, with regards to the actual exercise that's happening on June the twelfth, um, is, is it focusing on a few of the schedules, or its entirety, like, one to fifteen?
It's, there should be nineteen schedules.
Is it nineteen?
It's nineteen.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, it is nineteen.
Yeah.
I was on page one of two.
I remember where I was when I wrote number nineteen. Um, it's nineteen schedules. So, um, there, we're going to train to, uh, schedule, um, seven, the Reception Center and Pet Reception Center schedules.
Okay.
So we're going to train to that portion of the plan when we get the volunteers in. Um, and so they're familiar with it. So there's going to be theory, but there also has to be, the exercise is gonna have to be, we're gonna have to do dry runs with all the staff, so they should, show them where we, we are. So yes, we will be using the emergency plan to do the training.
So then, if we're gonna do, if we're training to two schedules on the twelve, like, what is required to, to bring the R M to the level of preparedness that, uh, is required by, I guess, by the legislation?
Well, you, you've already met the legislation.
Okay.
The, the plan, so, so the plan has to meet, um, legislation, regulation, and C S A Z sixteen hundred standard. That has to be in there. Like, for example, they want, like, two E O Cs, and they want, uh, you know, two, two Reception Centers, and they want a pet reception plan, and they want council training. All of that is already done. So when the, when the template was written by my team, um, of six, we, we, and we took that hundred and fifty-six pages of standard legislation and regulation, and we incorporated everything they wanted into each of the pertinent areas. Um, so there's an awful lot go, that goes into the actual development. We're actually in review stages for next year. So, um, the idea is, is that, uh, Ken's team understand that when they get ready to open up an E O C, which- So, um, the idea is, is that, uh, Ken's team understand that when they get ready to open up an E O C, which, you know, he has talked about, he'll, they'll, they'll know what to do because it's in the plan, and they'll use the plan. So the reception center team would use their piece, the E O C team would use their teeth. These new plans that are written, the way this one is, they're tear-out. So instead of sitting with two hundred and seventy-five pages as a, a volunteer, which is daunting, they're looking at ten or sixteen pages, right? So that's how I wrote them, so that we tear them out. We know schedule six is E O C, and schedule seven is reception, and schedule one is yours because it's legislation, regulation. That's how it's constructed for ease of use within a community.
Thank you for that. And just, uh, my final question, with regards to the June twelfth training, how often does the, um, the team, including the volunteers, need to train at that level? Is it annually, or every other year, or every other, like, three years?
Well, this is a full-scale exercise, and so we're gonna be training specifically for this, but, um, best practices in EM for volunteer management is to train quarterly. So I look at a, a two-hour, uh, two-hour training session quarterly. The issue that we have with volunteers is the same people that volunteer to run your skating programs and hockey programs and soccer programs are often the ones that come out. So we don't want to overtax. So, um, our volunteer groups meet quarterly, the ones that I deal with, and we might do a tabletop exercise. Or I might get a, a, a volunteer instructor to come in and talk about, you know, stop the bleed, safety, things like that, that could be used elsewhere in the community. So sort of like community emergency response teams. So.
Okay.
Eight hours, eight hours a year, roughly.
So that's, that, that makes, that makes sense to me. So then my, my next question, just based on that information, is, are there municipalities, whether it's in Manitoba or across Canada, as a, as a best practice, would they be paying those volunteers in those roles so that there is consistency?
Well, that's a difficult one to ask. On best practices, um, and I have two offices in Canada, so I do deal, and we do deal nationally. Um, you have to ask yourself this, when is a volunteer not a volunteer? When they can't leave. So if the MEC has opened up his operations center, and he needs them for a twelve-hour shift, and they have to stay for a twelve-hour shift because you're needed, they should be paid. Different municipalities do different things. I do know that East Saint Paul pays their volunteers, they pays to come out for meetings. St. Andrews does not. Armstrong does not. Gimli does not. Um, some of the larger municipalities do. So all I can say is that it's completely at the discretion of council with recommendations from the municipal emergency coordinators. I know that's not a cut and fast drive. I know that most of my Ontario teams that we deal with, in the volunteer bases, I'd say fifty percent are paid and fifty percent are not.
So just, just to go back to what we were speaking about a little bit earlier, in my, uh, in my budget, uh, and, uh, establishing that fund for volunteers.
I knew that's where you were going.
And that was a part of it, but that requires, obviously, uh, some conversation with myself and, uh, the C A O. And maybe conversations with him and you guys about developing a, uh, an incentive structure, or some sort of, uh, system of, uh, establishing commitment or motivation that may have a monetary element to it, or an incentive-based program in some regards, however it may be, right? But that, that's something I think that we need to discuss and establish, uh, what is comfortable and what we're willing to look at to maybe create or retain these volunteers once we've had them identified, showing that we do have, uh, uh, we do value them, and there is, uh, there is something established. I'm not making any suggestions on what that may be, but I think it's a, a conversation that we need to have to get on the same page and maybe look at best practices elsewhere, or what we're, what we're willing to do. So when I, when I came up with that budget amount that we'll consider at a later date, uh, some of that was initial processing to establish something, to at least address it in the short term.
See, for me, when you say volunteer, when is a volunteer a volunteer? When they're not paid. So as soon as you say you're gonna pay a volunteer, they're not a volunteer anymore. They're an employee.
Yeah, well, it's.
It brings it up to a different standard. And you're calling, and you're saying you want child abuse registry checks, I get that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, criminal record checks, I get that, too. But once, once you start paying a volunteer, they're not a volunteer anymore.
No, it's, see, it's, it's, uh, that's an interpretation of a definition of volunteer, right?
I mean, you give honorarium, it's a little bit different.
You know, we have, we seem to, in the modern, uh, sphere, at least, say volunteer is free. Well, volunteer, from my perspective, is someone who steps up in a time of need, right? And then how you, uh, compensate them, uh, is in a different, i- i- is completely independent of, uh, the act of stepping up to be a volunteer. And volunteerism shouldn't come with this notion that it's always free. Volunteerism is just the willingness to assist when, uh...
Well, that's your perspective. That's not mine.
I, I think we gotta end the conversation.
That's not my perspective, but I understand.
We're going in a direction that we shouldn't be at this time, so, uh, you know, just go ahead.
Just one other note, you guys may want to look at page, uh, one ninety-three and just update the R C, get the information from, and in for the new R C and P contact. This has recently changed.
Okay, we will.
Like in the last week.
In the last week, okay, so.
So which, uh, specifically, uh, if you guys?
Uh, you see it all the time. I know, but the person, it's no longer, uh...
Ken.
It's not Ken, and not McCacklin anymore.
Oh, he isn't, okay.
He's, he's moved up.
We, we have that information.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's not bad, then. We've only got one change to make out of all of those pages to, to, to the TV station, which I'll make sure that's changed immediately. Okay.
So then, uh, the, um, agreements, you're gonna look in?
The, the one that's from twenty eighteen, I'll certainly, we will, we will, there's two, we, we will look at, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And it just might simply be a matter of changing the, the date, rereading it, and putting it forward for you to move along, to, to move along to the next council.
Yeah, I think that's all that's.
Yeah, I do, too. Okay.
Good. Okay. Any other kind of questions? None? Okay, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate seeing you again. Yes, Merry Christmas, Ken.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks.
So next on the agenda is, uh, schedule for council meetings, four point four-two. So I'll let, uh, our chief administrator have a office speak to this also.
Sure, this is, um, this is a scheduling of the twenty twenty-four, um, committees of the whole, and, uh, the planned, uh, the planning and regular council meetings. Overall, it, it follows sort of the typical pattern, the traditional pattern of, um, every second and every fourth Thursday, and, um, the preceding Tuesday before the second Thursday of a month. Uh, the, the, there are some, uh, cancellations proposed consistent with, uh, those of previous years. The only deviation from the pattern and historic pattern is, is in, uh, March. We're proposing to move, um, the meeting up one week to the first Thursday in March, and the third Thursday in March. That still provides a two-week gap from the February meeting, and then moves what would have otherwise be a three-week gap between, um, sort of the end of February and the beginning of March, to the end of March and the beginning of April. And, and the reason for the shuffle is, is to accommodate spring break to, uh, for, um, for staff or council members, um, that, um, uh, want to be able to, uh, uh, have, have time at spring break. So that's the only proposed change.
I'm running the questions. Okay. So, uh, next is, uh, four point, four point, four point three, spending authority.
Yes. This is, um, this is approval, this is seeking approval for spending authority, uh, uh, for the early parts of twenty twenty-four, prior to the approval of the, um, the operating and capital budgets for twenty twenty-four. Um, looking for, um, spending authority to proceed and continue with operations.
Any questions? Councilor Pat Cadd?
Yeah, just a quick question, um, with regards to this amount, I can't remember what it was for twenty twenty-three, but are these in line with that? They're probably with a slight increase built in?
Uh, yeah, they'd be, they'd be relatively consistent with, with, um, with the twenty twenty-three numbers, yes. For the most part, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at it. I think, uh, if you go according to what our financial plan was last year, it works out to be somewhere around a third of what the plan is, I think, somewhere around there, so.
Yeah, which, which is, um, should be, should be plenty, should be more than enough.
And then now comes, um, four point four, point four, appointment to council committees. I know we did this last year, so I don't know if there's any changes that anyone would like to make, or if they want to do something else. Uh, there's probably a couple of changes. One of them is on the board of revisions, is that we should remove, uh, Brent. Uh, you had a suggestion for that? I think someone had a suggestion, no? Go ahead.
So, uh, for your board of revision, uh, we are required to have, uh, three, three members. Uh, council has, uh, done, uh, citizen appointments, uh, for those roles, and, uh, we have the C A O as recorded as secretary. Uh, the past few years, our director of finance has held that role, so that's something that council might consider is, is appointing Crystal Shahada as the secretary to the board of revision.
Hmm, why, why would we do that if we have Dave there? If Dave Wardrop is our secretary, why would we appoint Crystal as well?
Well, as finance manager, she, she would be the, the tax process champion. She would, she would be the person who knows the process best and, uh, what needs to be done.
Well, that's not what board of revisions is really about.
It's simply a secretary.
I've sat on that board, and Mr. Nepia basically runs that board, and goes through all of the applications, and they listen to all the appeals, and then they make a decision.
It's an administrative role.
Assessment decision. It's not really a CFO decision.
Uh, no, oh, so for, for clarity, that's not a decision-making role, it's a secretary role. So it's much like my role at a council meeting, where I.
Okay. So does Mr. Wardrop not want to serve as secretary? Is that what the case is, or?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm prepared to, I, I think it's important that, um, that Crystal be present. I'm prepared to act as secretary, though.
So do you want two people to be there? Is that what you're saying? Both of you?
Traditionally, both, both the C A O and the director of finance would be present.
Yeah.
That wouldn't change. All we're suggesting is that the director of finance be responsible as secretary. That's, that's not changing the C A O role at all.
Okay. So it's just typed up wrong here, is what you're saying. You just want to change. Mr. Wardrop is going to be on that. What, what is he gonna be acting as?
As C A O. He, he, he wouldn't be a member of the board of revision. He would be present to, to guide the members for what, uh, legislation is required, or if they have any questions. But he, as C A O, he's not an active member of the board of revision. And neither is the secretary.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Explain to me, uh, I, so there are gonna be five people then, at this meeting?
Yeah, I just don't know why we need two staff members. I think one staff member is fine, but.
Yeah, I guess, 'cause.
Crystal was never at any of the board of revision meetings I sat in on.
Okay. I guess, so there is, uh, explain the board members. There's three individuals.
Correct.
And they're the ones that make up all the decisions.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So then someone from the municipality's gotta be there to make sure that they're following all of the regulations, and that's what I understand.
Correct.
Correct.
So that would typically be a combination of the C A O and the director of finance, and then you'd have, you'd appoint a secretary to record the decisions of the meeting. So that can be anyone. It can be anyone, uh, that you choose. It can be the C A O, it could be the director of finance. It's really your choice.
Right, okay. Okay, previous to this, I sat on the board of revision. I think Councilor Bichetti also did, right? Uh, and the board of revisions gave us the information after it was done. We sat and discussed it, they wrote it all down, and then it was given to us. So I, I'm not sure why we need two people recording. I don't get it. I sat on this board, I watched how it worked twice, and, uh, I mean, the person running the board is a gold member.
Yes.
Of assessment of real estate in the, in the province, and is prob, is probably the best expertise in the province. So I think he would know legislation.
I, I think there's some confusion to, to the roles. We're just talking about the secretary to the meeting. So the municipality must complete minutes for the, the board of revision meeting.
Okay.
That's that role. This is what, what we're talking about. Not, we're not talking about the higher level of the, the actual board of revision.
Okay. So what you're saying is, instead of Dave taking the minutes, Crystal Shahada's gonna take the minutes?
It's, it's a suggestion. Council does not have to, to change anything.
So if Crystal's taking the minutes, does Dave still have to be there, or not?
Wouldn't, wouldn't have to be, but it's, it's, traditionally, the C A O attends.
I would, I would make efforts to attend.
Are you ready?
I would, I would, I would plan to attend, yeah.
You know.
Okay. Okay, uh, Councilor Pat Cadd, you had a question?
Yeah, I just see, uh, two committees with citizen members. Have those citizen members been contacted, and are they willing to let their name stand?
Joe Brad and Eleanor Link, who's currently present in your room.
Yes, it would be.
You're, you're on the, uh, uh, what are they called? Nettley Grassmere Willow Creek?
I was not aware. I went to the ATM yesterday, and, uh, there was a lack of a quorum, uh, with the sub-district. Had I known, I would have been there for the sub-district meetings, and I would have represented the sub-district by then.
Okay, so it sounds like you want, you're, you're okay with your name standing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's Joe Brad.
Uh, he's on a different committee, East Interlake Watershed District.
If I may, uh, we would suggest that, that this actually be removed from our council appointments. As a subcommittee of the watershed group, this is a, a term appointment, and it's not ours to make.
Of which one, sorry?
Of the Nettley Grassmere Willow Creek I W M P.
We previously did that, though. We previously appointed the person.
Joe Brad was the co- community representative.
Yes.
He's from East Interlake Watershed.
Yeah.
Has he been informed?
They're, they're two separate, they're two separate things.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think we need.
Formed as well?
Yeah, I think.
Was he informed? Was he informed?
I think we need to check on Joe Brad, because I don't know if he's still living in the community.
He's aware.
He's aware?
Yeah, I, I've, I've discussed with him.
So the other change that, uh, is on the Cartier Regional Water Co-op is probably to add Dave Wardrop instead of Dorothy.
Instead of me? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was in addition to me.
That's only two, only two. We can have an alternate, you could be the alternate.
No, I'm happy to give it up. Go ahead. I thought I was doing okay, but, okay. I thought you were coming on as an addition to us being there.
Uh, I, I.
They're only allowed two.
Only allowed two.
Only allowed two.
I understand.
So one of the, it's either the C A O, or mayor, or the council, so.
Well, I think it'd be better, uh, Dave, if you were on that anyways. I mean, uh, there's issues going on there that you, as a C A O, should probably be aware of. And so I think it, it, it would be better for you to be on that. So I'm happy to defer to you.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Any other, uh, changes that need, that would like to see made, or?
Do you want to put a alternate for the primary?
Right, yes. Who would want to be? Yeah, no, yeah, who wants to be an alternate?
Either myself or Giorgio's.
It's gotta be one of the two, so.
Why don't we have Giorgio come on first, and then Peter come on the next time?
All right with that?
Uh, I would say, uh, Councilor Pat Cadd, too, but he's got Wednesday night sewed up.
Yeah.
So, you know.
So is Georgia with that?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Councilor Campbell and Councilor, uh, Stett?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine with it. Whichever way, it's just good to have one so we have full representation if someone's not there, so.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, that's good. So next is four point four, four point four point five, uh, B N K Studios Administrative Report. I'll have the C A O speak to that.
Yes, um, this is, uh, this report is, uh, discussing the, uh, extension of video recording services provided by, uh, B N K Studios. Uh, it's proposing a two-year extension under the existing, uh, terms and, uh, under the, the same, uh, cost model. Uh, the only change in the proposal is that either party can provide, uh, ninety days' notice to, written notice, uh, at any time to terminate the agreement. Otherwise, it's, uh, an extension under the, uh, the current terms.
Counselor Faktan?
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with this. Um, I think, uh, the work done by B N K Studios is great. Um, I did have, um, uh, issue that was brought to my attention on a couple of occasions from two different constituents with regards to audio. And I'm just wanting to know, I don't know if, uh, you can speak to it or if the service provider can speak to it, but it sounded like we spoke to it earlier. But there were issues with audio before. Uh, it was brought to my attention. And then that's the kind of the reason why we were moving the microphones around a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and even with delegations coming and even with the back table there, there was some issues with audio. So I'm not sure if, uh, you know, I think it's important that we get the audio right because once you miss the opportunity, you can't go back and re-record it. So is there an opportunity for the service provider to provide, uh, improved equipment to ensure the optimized audio of video recording of, of the proceedings?
Yes, um, and we did, we did, uh, discuss that with the service provider and, and, um, he did provide options to us. And, uh, there are, uh, solutions in terms of different types of equipment and different types of technology that we can pursue. As a, as a first effort though, um, uh, he had identified that a lot of times the issues, um, relate to, uh, the moving of the microphones and things like that. Where there's a tendency for people to sometimes bring a microphone towards them. They are set up to, to pick up a band of audio from an area and, and are optimized and, and managed to do so. So we agreed that we would proceed with sort of the existing equipment and the existing terms under the existing costing. Um, we would, uh, sort of all, um, make a conscious effort to, to, uh, just speak, uh, and, and leave the microphones as are. And, uh, and the, um, the sort of the, the controlling of that would be done by the service provider itself. Sort of the, the, the controlling of the sound and the input and so forth. So if we find that that isn't, um, working out, uh, and there still are issues, certainly there is an opportunity at that point to, uh, to look at making some changes and look at different, different types of equipment, maybe direct individual microphones for each person or something along those lines.
Okay, and just another question with regards to, and I'm not sure if this is something that's done by the service provider or if it's within their purview. But I know this council is talking about, uh, creating, uh, an opportunity for, uh, people who are speaking to be aware of the time, uh, of that and length of that they're speaking. Sort of as a courtesy to the delegations, uh, to ensure that everyone has a fair opportunity. So I, I don't know if that's part of this equipment, uh, provision or not, but, uh, I just wanted to throw that out there in terms of, uh, it's part, it's part of the proceedings and, and having, whether, you know, just having that time.
Yeah.
So people can speak for a certain period of time.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion and certainly something that, um, that I can raise with the provider. And, um, if they're able to provide some kind of a queue or, or a timer or a clock or something to work with, we could, uh, we could work with that, with them on that. And if not, um, you know, we could maybe look at options ourselves that, uh, that we may be able to do something.
Okay.
Counselor present?
Uh, to Counselor Pakti's question, we didn't budget for it last year for, uh, the timer.
Okay.
Counselor Fliber?
Yeah, um, one of the major problems I find is, uh, if my, uh, Counselor Pakti can leans forward, I can't hear you. If Counselor Pat can't, you lean forward, I can't hear Counselor Campbell. So it might be going on the audio, but I can't hear them. So I think one of the things we need is amplification, not just microphones for recording. So as you know, at Red River Planning, we have microphones that amplify, right? So you can hear everybody at the table, as you know, coming from East St. Paul. This is a problem I find, especially with people that are coming and sitting there and talking. Half the time I can't hear what they're saying because they're either talking too quiet or they're mumbling or whatever. So I think we have to look at some kind of amplification as well. Because I'd like to hear Counselor Campbell and Counselor Bichetti and a lot of times I can't hear you either because, um, it's mumbled a bit. So if we had some kind of amplification, that might help towards the recording as well. I don't know if, uh, if our, uh, Mr. Buchholzer would like to speak to that, well, since he's in the room or not, or do you want to speak to that?
I, um, I, I could certainly raise it with him and, and discuss alternatives and, you know, I, I don't know. I, you're prepared to speak to it at this time, but, uh, yeah, if you are, we'd be happy to hear your, your perspective on options. But if, if you want to, if you want to digest that a little bit and, and talk about what options we have, we, we can certainly look at that as well.
I don't know if the two systems can coexist.
So, so if you want to speak to it, you need to come forward and.
Or, or, I mean, you can speak to it, you can speak to it on Thursday as well, if, if that's, if that's.
I'll speak because I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Brian Buchholzer, uh, B N K Studios. Do you want my West St. Paul address?
Yes, please.
Eight forty-four Shawshank Road. In a, in the simplest form, it's actually slightly two different issues.
Yeah.
The service that provides is just taking what is happening, recording it.
Yeah.
The amplification that you're suggesting, in theory, yes, it can be done, but that is the room.
Yeah.
Uh, the equipment is the R M's equipment. It's not.
Your equipment.
My equipment. So it's how it's set up in the room. Um, are there ways to go about that and enhance that and make it better? Yes, but that isn't a discussion that we have had at this point.
Would it interfere with what you're doing?
Not necessarily. Um, it would be just changing the system, uh, that would allow us to do that. The simple answer is yes, there's ways of doing it.
Okay.
But that's not the current system that is set up in this room.
Okay, so I know that there's some speakers up there. I don't know if they're so old that they can't be utilized anymore. Because sometimes technology has gone way beyond those things and you might have to have a, a, a different system altogether. It is a small room, but it's just the clarity that we're not getting.
I'd be more than happy to look into suggestions for doing that, but.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's something that has not been raised with me to look at the current system that is in this room.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, it's just kind of utilizing the equipment that the R M had when, when we started with COVID and.
Yeah.
Went for it. I mean, originally it was done just to be live and I guess it's slightly changed in the way that.
Yeah.
We're doing it, uh, now that we're back in council, so, um, the set of problems we had then aren't the same ones we have now. But the, some of the, we'll call them issues that can be worked out are definitely things that can't be worked out. It's just, uh, something I guess through council to the C E O to discuss, I guess, any of, of options that I can then bring to you guys for budget purposes and see if that's works for what you guys want to do. And, and the simple answer is yes, it can be better. Um, it's just a matter of.
It would enhance what you're doing too, would it not?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you on a calendar year contract basis? Just, I'm just trying to figure out why this is here. Are you, is it expiring December twenty?
Correct.
December twenty, okay. So if we were to extend it month, month to month until we sort this out, we could do that with you, presumably?
Of course. They're two separate issues, yeah. Um, can you add that to my capital request?
Well, what, 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 what I, what I could do is I, um, I could ask, uh, um, B N K to come forward with maybe a, um, a proposal or, or some alternatives to provide some audio enhancement. And then we can take a look at, um, whether we feel that, you know, depending on the costing, whether or not, uh, council is interested in proceeding at that point. But I think, I think all of that, and based on the conversation that, that I did have with the contractor, um, I'm of the understanding and I'm confident that all of that can be, um, worked with within the existing contract. And, and we'll be able to, whether, whether that's, um, direct microphones or whether that's, um, um, any kind of amplified, uh, audio within the room or otherwise, we could ask for some proposals and see, depending on the cost, the costing, whether or not we proceed.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, uh, I have confidence in the capability of, uh, B N K Studios to, uh, deliver on sort of the existing service or any enhancements we, uh, we wish to make.
Can I type them out one thing then?
Yeah.
Based on my comment? Um, just from, I guess, a so-called contract point of view, any of that loose audio enhancements that we're talking about or suggesting, don't change what I do.
Yeah.
So that doesn't change my costs or whatever else. That's just another plug that I would put into my system to capture it for you. So that would change your infrastructure in here, but that has nothing to do with changing the contract.
It would just be additional equipment for us and you would wire it in?
Correct.
Okay, good.
So just, so it's not like this price is going to double or triple because you're doing it.
Yeah.
Two separate issues, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you can make recommendations as to what we should do because I, I know that if we, we have the ones that East St. Paul has, like each person, when they speak, has to turn it on and then it goes to a speaker, right? So then you can hear everybody, which is really great. And it's also like the talking stick. If only one person at a time would be speaking.
We could re-gift these to access center.
Yeah, it would be good at access center too, when we're doing big meetings.
We use them for that public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that answer that question?
Yeah.
And we'll also, any questions? Counselor Campbell or Counselor Bichetti? I guess, just to clarify, just some things. Uh, so the proposal is for a two-year contract and this price here that he has here, that's for the two years combined. It's not for each year. That's how I, that's how I'm reading this. For a two-year service period, a cost of, uh, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars and.
Hey, that's an annual cost.
Yes, it's an annual cost, yeah.
Oh, okay. Is, is that how everybody reads it? I wasn't reading it that way.
I, 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 that's how I read it.
That's our annually?
Yeah, it says annual maintenance, so I'm thinking annual one year and annual operator service. That's.
For a second or third year at the same cost?
One year.
It's, it's annually.
Oh, okay, it's somewhere else.
It's on the history.
Oh, on history, okay. And then, so this is also for, um, three-hour periods and for so many meetings a, a month, correct? Did I read that somewhere?
Yes.
So what, what happens when we have more than, there are a lot of meetings that are here?
Um, I think, I think historically, have we, have we, um,
Yeah.
Provided an extra charge, uh, cost for that?
Correct, so it's charged out at the, the hourly rate that three hours of three meetings for a year. It's charged out, um, invoiced to the municipality for access hours.
Oh, okay. It would be a problem to put that in here too, as part of it too, so that we all know what it is. Because right now, when I read this, it's only for those meetings and there's no, there is no wording in there that, that, uh, what happens when, uh, we have the B N K Studios, and I'm sure we have accommodated him because he's always shown up for every other meeting we've had. So I'm thinking this should probably be part of the, uh.
Yeah, we can be a little clearer that this is for the base amount and that any, any additional amounts, um, uh, are charged at, at the, at the, at the same hourly rate.
Yeah, okay.
With the same rate, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, going on to the next one, four point four, point six, quotation for snow clearing. It was administrative report. I'll have the C E O speak to this also.
Okay. So this is, um, this is a, um, had one bid on a quotation for snow clearing in some of the areas that have, um, uh, previously or historically been done by contractor, um, snow clearing contractor. A lot of these areas has had historically been done a, as, um, as they were evolving developments and charged back to the developer. We are looking to continue with the model in these new developed areas. River Springs area gets charged back. The rest, um, are, are within the R M itself as part of regular operations now. Or River Springs Grove is now charged back. So, uh, again, we had one bid. Um, there has been escalation, uh, in the pricing from, um, the previous contract, uh, which was a one-year contract, uh, and escalation from the previous year over that. So we are seeing some, um, some price increasing, but, uh, we're looking to lock in a two-year contract this time with, um, with the, uh, the bidder.
Here?
Okay, go ahead. Counselor Fliber?
Okay, a couple, I have a couple of questions about this. First of all, uh, the R F Q went out based on historically what you've been doing, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess, um, the Trails of West St. Paul is now owned by us, right?
Correct.
Industrial Park?
Correct.
Uh, now Park View Point Phase One, is that ours or is that still going back to the development?
It's ours.
Okay. And Park View Point Two is ours?
Yes.
Okay, and so the only thing on here that's not ours is River Springs Grove?
Correct.
So why is our staff not doing this?
Well, um, our staff, the staffing that we have now, the complement that we have now, has been clearing snow in the other parts of the R M. These areas, these newly developed areas, were being cleared by contractor when they were, um, under the, the ownership of the developer.
Right.
When they got turned over to the R M, um, the model that's been proposed is to continue with that split between some contracted service and some operating, uh, some internal operating service. And so.
Who proposed that?
Uh, well, it's, it, I'm in favor of it, so I'm proposing it, uh, a contract, a split model. And so the, this has been done historically, it had been done up to this point and is being proposed to continue. And so, um, uh, the advantage of this is, is that you do have some ability to, to maintain sort of some cost control or some cost regulation by doing your own fleet. If your contractor doesn't show up or goes bankrupt, you still have some in-house capability. On the other hand, you also have an ability to scale up or scale down depending on demand, more so than you do yourself.
So what you're saying, from what I'm hearing, is that you don't think our guys could efficiently handle some more of this?
No, I'm saying we're not currently staffed to handle all this additional work. I mean, if we.
Do we have the equipment to handle it?
Um, probably not. Um, it would depend on, and of course, this depends on the, the nature of the event. This year, of course, we've been more than equipped because there's been very little snowfall and there's been very little, uh, um, need for clearing. In fact, um, we haven't called upon the contractor for a full plow yet, uh, from this winter. Only some clearing of some, some drifts and some standing and, and otherwise. So the really, i- i- so depending on this, the year and depending on the weather, um, this year, for example, we're more than equipped to, to manage it. But there's been very little, um, substantive snowfall. The, the point is, is under a typical year, we aren't equipped or staffed to do all the work that had been, been done by contractors in these new developments. And so what we're proposing is to continue with contractors doing the work in these developments. The alternative is to staff up, uh, substantively and be able to respond to these developments and all these developments throughout the R M. Or alternatively, respond less quickly. And we could, another option is, is to do it all internally, all in-house, but your response times, um, are going to be slower. We probably aren't going to be, um, you know, in a heavy snowfall event, we'd probably have difficulty, uh, clearing all areas with existing staff and existing equipment in a day. That'd still be within the policy, but, but, uh, we would have difficulty doing that.
So I, I got some emails on this last snow and I was told what, uh, the, when the R M did their. when the RM did their portion, it was done quickly, but when the contractors was to do their part, it wasn't done quickly. So what happened there? You didn't call the contractor or?
Are we talking about just this last snowfall?
Yeah.
We, we contacted the contractor and asked them to clear some drifts and some drifting area in the new developments.
Yeah.
And my understanding is they had responded by, like the work was completed, those drifts had been cleared by ten AM or so. There might have been some more drifting later in the day with some wind or otherwise. Perhaps that was the case, but my understanding, and I can check on that and find out exactly, you know, if there wasn't, and if there is and was an issue in the responsiveness of the contractor. And if that is, if there is, we'll raise that with them. My understanding is, is that the, the new developments were cleared by ten AM.
Okay. So my question is, can there not be a sort of marrying in this contract of the two? So you have some that, you have a, a group right now that are going out. And what I hear sometimes is, you know, the cost of having some of our guys do overtime would be similar to the cost that we're paying a contractor. Is that correct or not correct?
Quite likely. Again, though, this is, this is, this is an ability to respond in time and an ability to be scalable, right? So it, it isn't, it isn't so much about are our, you know, you know, are our crews capable of doing this work? For sure they are. The question is, is do we want to build a staff complement capable of doing all these developments and the new developments? And then if you have a year like this year, we've, we've got substantial vital time, right? On the other hand, if we have a very heavy snowfall year, you know, we may want to scale up even further than, than we are now. This provides us the ability to scale and, and, and respond to events as they come. And so, so it is a mix of both internal resources and, and external support.
Call them unless you want to call them to do this.
Correct.
So my question here, and I, and I know because I'm in union, I get this question. Are you giving work away that could go to the union employees?
I don't use that as giving work away. I view that as, as outsourcing high-demand work outside of our existing workforce's capacity. So our existing workforce has ability to do the existing areas. Existing areas that they have done traditionally. And we, and we aren't taking any of that away. We aren't outsourcing any of that.
Okay.
What this does is some of the newer areas that have come online,
Yeah.
where, where, we're allocating those new areas to the contractor where they have experience. We're using, doing the traditional areas with our, with our staff where they have experience. But we've got two, we've got, we've got additional capacity if we ever need to draw upon it for a very heavy snowfall. And we also have internal capability if for some reason there's a problem with the contractor. So we've kind of got some, some, some backup if we get into an issue.
Can you call the contractor and say, I just want you guys to do metal-ons and Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah.
That's all I want.
And that's in fact, that's in fact, that's precisely what happened last weekend.
Okay.
When we had the, the snow blow in and, and there were some areas that needed service in, in particular, we didn't do a full plow.
Okay.
We came in, there's some drifting here, cleaning up some areas, do some sanding, good.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that guys that are working there have an opportunity to do overtime if, if it demands it. You know, that the work is coming back to them and then if they can't handle it, then it goes out to the contractor.
Yeah, the, the existing, the existing workforce, if, if, if we get a snowfall overnight, they're on site and, and rolling. Same thing on the weekends, same thing on any holidays or otherwise. And, and so the overtime is there needed.
Also, if I may ask, if we, I'm not finished. I'm still, I'm still got, holding the floor here. Could we have the, and I don't know if it's on our website or not, but could we have the number for Manitoba Infrastructures Plowing? Because you always get the email, why isn't Grassmere plowed? Why isn't Blackdale Road plowed? Why isn't Miller Road plowed? Why haven't you guys plowed it? We can say, go to the website, phone these guys or email them and tell them that you're not happy. Because we don't have control of that.
Yeah, we can provide you with contact, sure.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of, I, I took a good look at the work, the scope of work. I kind of calculated it out, you know, in any sort of substantial snowfall. You're going to need two machines at a full day, whether it's a twelve, fourteen-hour day for two machines, especially because we're clearing windrows off, off driveways, just to sort of, you know, give everybody a little bit of idea what I think the workload would be. So you'd have to have two spare machines and, you know, it's going to take half of your twenty-four-hour day of clearing just these, these areas. So that, that will affect your...
Overall service, yeah.
Yeah, your overall service.
Yeah.
Counselor Shetty?
I know it's got, you brought it up in the conversation here, so I'm just gonna, if it snowed tomorrow, what do we have as a complement at PW to clear snow? If it snowed tomorrow morning and they had to jump in the equipment and go?
Right now?
I don't even know what, yeah.
Right now, we have two vacancies, so we would have six staff members available.
Did that new plow truck show up yet?
No.
Hasn't it been on order for like two years now?
Oh, no.
It's supposed to come in February, I believe.
Yeah.
So I think, I, I, I think we have one plow truck, one sanding truck?
Oh, in, in terms of hardware, I have that as well. So I thought the question pertained to staff members.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Staff members, but then my next question was going to be, what do we have for equipment?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just lost track of what.
Yeah, so in, ideally, we would have, we would have eight staff members available. And in terms of equipment, we have two graders, one plow sanding truck, one sanding truck, three rubber tire loaders, one John Deere box blade, a Bobcat six-foot wide snow plow for, for trails. And then we also have the, the new sidewalk Bobcat snow blower plow, so.
We've got lots of equipment.
We've got lots of equipment. Ideally, we would have two more staff on, available as well. And we're working towards that. And, and so that's where we're at.
Right now, we have a six-person complement during the date. I'm just saying on a normal date.
Yes. We're, we're approved, we're approved for eight and we've got, so we've got, we're, we've got two vacancies right now.
I guess the question though is, is do you need the two when you don't have a snowstorm?
Well, that, the answer is yes, but, but the, the, the point you're making is precisely the reason why you contract out. Because if, if you don't contract out, you know, maybe we're at ten or twelve.
Yeah.
Right? And, and now we don't need that many.
Right.
So that's precisely the point.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have just one. So does this, so they're just doing snow clearing. What about snow removal?
Yeah.
This is just for snow clearing?
Well, snow, snow removal in the policy refers to the clearing of windrows. So this does include windrow removal, if that's what you, if that's what you're asking.
No, I was asking that...
Hauling?
Yeah.
Hauling, no, it does not include hauling, but it does, it does include clearing of windrows.
Okay.
Do we, are you done, Ms. Sherry?
Go ahead, ask the question.
Do we ever, have we historically done hauling?
I can't answer that. I, I would say more than likely, yes, but I don't know that. And perhaps not, let me rephrase. Perhaps not, but in these newer areas where you've got higher density, I expect you will.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so...
Because there's not much room to pile snow.
Yeah, you may or may have not in, in, I can't answer that whether you have or haven't in recent years. But it would not surprise me that in the newer, higher-density areas that, that you could have a winter where there's a need for some hauling.
And I think in some of the existing, I know in, what's the rivers? The one just by the perimeter.
Tralordale?
Not, not Trails, on the other side.
Riverdale.
Riverdale. When I was campaigning, they were talking about having too much snow in their yard sometimes. And it probably would have been safe if they would have hauled some away. It's not that they would have to do, you know, massive hauling, but they had a huge pile of snow in someone's yard. He was, he was getting annoyed with it. He didn't mind it, but at some point, it was too much for him.
Where do you haul it to? Snowed up there in the city?
Yeah. So, okay. Any other questions?
There's some bigger mountains.
None? Okay, so we'll carry on to the next one, which is accessibility, four point four eight.
No, four point four seven.
Four, four point four seven. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll let you speak to it.
Four point four, oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, not accessibility, right.
Yeah.
This is, this is for the access center rental fees to be waived at grant request for two events. The West St. Paul Fire Department Poker Tournament on March ninth and the Red River Basin Commission Gala Dinner on March twentieth. Is proposed to waive the, the event fees for the access center for these two events. Historically, these events have been granted a fee waiver and the proposal is to do the same again in 2024.
Any questions?
Yeah, is the Red River Basin, is it just a donation that we're doing kind of?
Well, it's, it's...
It's not an internal, like, I mean, I see West St. Fire Department as an internal department.
Yeah, it's an external and, and that's why the waiver fee is valued at sixteen hundred as opposed to fourteen hundred. There, there's no actual cash contribution. It's a contribution in kind of the facility.
Any other questions? Okay, so now accessibility plan. I'll let the CEO speak, the CEO speak to that also.
Okay, this is, this is seeking approval for the municipal accessibility plan for 2024 and 2025. There's requirement to, to update this plan every two years. And there's been a number of updates that, that have been made, mostly again, housekeeping items. Things like the update to the, the working group members and the overview of some of the facilities and, and otherwise, the work plan and identification of some of the barriers and so forth within the, within the community. So it's, it's an update of the existing document and it has to be done every second year. It's a proposal to do so.
Anyone have any questions?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Kleiber?
For the accessibility plan, how come there's nobody from the community? On the, on the working group members?
My understanding is if the existing membership reflects sort of the same membership or is modeled on the, the same membership that we've had in the past. It's, it's a fair question that, you know, maybe if we want to look for, for participation from the community, it's something we could do.
I mean, I could think of one person that has accessibility issues that would probably like put some, have some input into it. I mean, we were challenged by this individual to go and take a wheelchair and go on the trails and we did it. And it was very, very challenging, especially here by Middle Church Home. It's one of the issues that I would like to see addressed as a Trails Community Liaison is why is this, the trail used to be asphalt or sidewalk and it's, it was replaced and then it's just, I think, quarter down or whatever. It was terrible getting in a wheelchair and, and trying to navigate that. And there's so many people in wheelchairs there that would like kind of do the loop and now can't, can't do that. I mean, I, I can make a recommendation, but I think somebody from the community would, would, would also be very helpful in this regard. You know, as far as like physical disability.
Fair point.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I wanted to say, who is the, who's the coordinator? They mentioned of a coordinator. Who's the coordinator of the plan? Would that be you? Oh, no, it's Laney Shaw is the accessibility coordinator. There you go. So I noticed in this document and I read it, I read through it, there's a number of different accessibility things you're talking about. You're talking about communication accessibility. You're talking about physical issues like physical disability. And I think that's really good to identify those different barriers, especially we've talked about communication issues for a long time. People having email, people not having email. We've kept up those mailboxes for that purpose. But I like one thing that's been really identified in here is the parks. And also having the ability to access different floors. So I know here, we at one point, I think Laney, we did talk about an elevator, right? I don't know if by law we have to do that now. I don't think so, right? Because that's really our CEO's office. He could come down and have a meeting, right, in here.
Correct. So from an employer's standpoint, you know, if we have to accommodate someone who, who can't do stairs, that we typically would work from the upper level. We'd have to sort that out. We wouldn't be required to put an elevator at our site or the public worksite unless we're updating the building and, and the permit would require such.
Okay.
And then as, as far as the, the working group, if, if council wishes to consider in the year, the second year of this plan and the year that we would be preparing the new plan, if you'd want to consider a community appointee, that, that could be something you look at in your appointment resolution. Part of the plan does require community consultation and we are working to expand the community consultation that we do. So that would also be reaching out directly to, to residents. And this plan had community consultation with service groups and churches and schools and that sort of outreach. So we look to expand that in our next plan update.
I think, I think that if you have a member from the community on your committee and they could commit to being when you have your meetings, I think that would be good, great input for you, especially if they have a disability issue. I would say public parks, one of the things that happened at River Springs Grove is when they went to do that park, they were going to put quarter down again. I remember fiercely fighting for asphalt there because there's two issues here, especially on trails. There's a physical disability and then there's mothers with, with strollers, right? So you build a, a park with quarter down and mom can't get the stroller in there to move it around with the kids. That was a big... When I had my kids, that was a problem, right? If you have, if you have some asphalt there, you can move around quite easily for everybody. So we have to consider not just physical disability, but also young families accessing the parks with young babies, that kind of thing. So I think that's, I'm glad that you guys have identified that. And we should have a review of all the parks to see if they are accessible that way. I've never thought of that and it's, it's a great thing that you've got in this document. So, and then also you, you've talked about the trails, which is, it's, it's challenging. It's challenging for some people as well. I've had, when I was campaigning, I had people say to me, my kid can't ride a bike on that trail. There's no way. Like, what good is the trail if my kid can't even ride their bike or do anything on the trail? And I said, well, right now they're for walking. So it's something that we can look into. So it's something that we can look into maybe in the future. I don't know. When I see the trails at East St. Paul, they're unbelievable, especially one that goes down, uh, I don't know, Hodnot?
Yeah.
Unbelievably fantastic. It's all asphalted. It's beautiful. Uh, same if you go into the city and you go to Island Lakes, everything's asphalted. It's wide, it's, it's divided. It's fantastic. We have to, we have to, I, I feel like with trails and being the liaison committee, I feel like sometimes people want quantity instead of quality. And I know that we're, uh, widening Main Street. I get that. But we could maintain a trail on the other side and, and do a nice job with the trails as we. We have to aspire to a, a higher level, in my opinion. And I, and that's what I hear from the citizens too. So just a thought, throw it out there. It's part of accessibility.
Thank you.
Uh, I just got a couple of comments. When I see the plan, I, you know, the plan is a, a good plan. It's, it's probably, uh, it's, it's very thorough. I'm just wondering, though, if there can be probably some more definite, um, statements made. Is that, an example is that trails will be routinely checked for accessibility barriers and maintenance will be performed as required. And it says ongoing, so I guess I see that kind of vague. So what's meant by ongoing, like? And how routinely is it checked? Is it checked once a year? Is there a timeframe to some of this ongoing issues that we have here? Cause this year seems like ongoing could be going on for, uh, there's no real commitment to get it done by a certain time. If there was a date to it, we would have, you know, by the end of the year, we'd try and have some focus on it. But I, I think there's a lot here and I can understand why it is a lot of it because I see there is a lot here going on, so.
If I, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, so addressing trail maintenance will never be completed. That, it's, it is ongoing. Um, so that, that will never, never change. It's an ongoing, um, project, work that the municipality undertakes. Um, with our trails, you know, if there's heavy rains, there, there can be washouts or puddling, uh, which, which make, um, for uneven surfaces. Uh, we do just regular routine maintenance. Um, weather affects the, the trail quality. So we re-gravel, we resurface them with, with fresh gravel and, uh, level and, um, from time to time, uh, you know, different, different things work their way out of the soil and, and break the surface of our trails. So we, we make sure that they're safe, uh, in those regards as well. So it's a combination of routine maintenance that the municipality does or anything that a, a resident brings to our attention through the request for service system.
So I guess my next question then is, so if someone comes along and says, okay, so when was the last time it was checked for accessibility barriers? Do you have proof that it was done? Did someone do a, a physical inspect, inspection? Cause you know what? I can see them going down trails, but does that mean that they're going down trails to look for this or just to, to clear it out? Like, that's where I see this, is that is someone specifically looking to see is there accessibility? And it probably ties in with Consular Kleiber's, uh, issue with the asphalt. Does someone physically go out there and say, uh, yes, no, this isn't, this isn't accessible. We need to fix this up? And maybe that might address some of the issues of, um.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't really thrilled about the asphalting of Grassmere Road, but I'll tell you something. I see a lot of people out there using it now. They love that trail and they're using it all the time. And I, I just feel like that's sort of the, where we need to go. You know, raise it up, raise up our, our quality of, of trails.
So I guess that's where I'm, I'm going is that instead of, um, some of it is going to be ongoing, but, but some of it can be more specific that, you know, uh, there could be a form that it's checked out. Uh, I know there was training. They say there's training that's ongoing. I would think that you would need training. Maybe there needs a, a time period, like you need training yearly or the, uh, and then it's documented that's done yearly for this because right now it's, it's, it's kind of vague. I don't know if, like, this goes to the province? Is that where this goes?
Yeah.
And do they question all this or not? No?
No.
No? Okay.
Just a report.
Go ahead, Consular.
Just a comment, you know, uh, we're talking about asphalting trails along property that doesn't even belong to the ORM. Look what happened last year. They, they widened the highway and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. After they do all that, that's.
Cut the highway out and ca, this council's hearing the brunt of it. Meanwhile, we had nothing to do with that trail being removed.
Yeah, I know.
So right now to asphalt those, I don't even know if our contract with the province, cause I think we have to ask for approvals, to put those on there, and I think they're called temporary trails, if I'm not mistaken.
But the one at Middle Church was previously asphalted. And then for some reason it's not anymore. I think it's because they widened it there and they didn't put it back or whatever. So we're, we're talking about accessibility here though, too, right? For a Middle Church home? I'm not saying we have to do all of them all of a sudden, but if, uh, you know, if you want to talk about accessibility, that little piece there would make it very accessible for people that are in that home.
So maybe, maybe this is, uh, maybe a, a piece for the capital program discussion as well.
Yeah. I know there's some history there too, so you might want to get in behind that history.
Any other questions? Move on to the next one. Four point, four point nine fee and charges by law?
Yeah, I, I did have some questions about this, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking at the access center fees. Now, um, I see social event, wet event, wetting around. We, we bought the, the access center a divider. And when we bought this divider, we approved this divider. It was supposed to split it up so that you could rent one side and you could rent another side and you could create more income. Right? Did we not approve that? Yeah. So where is that reflected in these rates? Did you want to say that?
Uh, well, there, there will be, th- this report here is simply an upgrade or an update to the, um, lot grading fees. There's been, Stantec, the consulting firm, has provided us with, um, a, a new set of fees for, um, lot grading and, um, access permits. And so they're coming out with a new schedule fees for lot, for lot grading and access permits. This is a, um, a, a refresh of those because those new, new fees are coming online at the end of the month. There will be a, a more full sum update to all the fees and charges, uh, in the new year.
Okay, cause I mean, you, you are giving me that schedule.
This is, this is the schedule.
This is Schedule A, page four, as the access center.
And, and that, that is existing by law and existing charges. The only charges that are being proposed to change here right now are those for the, um, uh, uh, lot grades and for the, um, driveway access permits. And that's because Stantec has come forward with a new set of fees and we want to make sure that the fees that we're collecting, um, we're not collecting at a loss. And so we're updating those fees to, to correspond with Stantec's increase. There will be all the, all the new fees for the access center and otherwise will be updated in the new year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
When's the last time this was tendered out? To see if the fees are, you know, in the ballpark or they.
Stantec, you mean?
Yeah.
Stantec? Um, I could find out for you. I, I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that. Pardon me?
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Just there's dates in here, but I don't know. It doesn't say anything about when it was.
In, in fairness, um, there was a proposed, um, uh, the fees were to be increased. Um, now I'm not sure if I have this right. I think they were, they were proposed to be increased in twenty twenty-one by Stantec and they never did. I think I have the, the year right on that. So, um, this is the first increase, uh, from Stantec in a number of years on this. So I could certainly find out when the last time we tendered this out was, but, uh, but Stantec's fees have not been increased for, uh, for a number of years now.
I'm just not saying they're, I'm not saying they're high. I just, I have no clue, right?
Yes, fair, fair question. I can find that out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so now we go down to the financial statements, four point, four point ten. Does anyone have any questions in the financial statement? And then October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I have questions, Mayor.
Consular Kleiber.
I'm ready. Okay, um, now I, I'm going to give you my notes so that you can take them back to Crystal and maybe she can give us a little bit more, uh, a few more answers. But on, um, page three and four, um, I was baffled by the numbers because when I added up the numbers on a tape, because I do that for a living, um, I added up all the numbers for budgeted revenues and actual revenues. And my actual came to nineteen million, four hundred and sixty thousand and my budgeted came to twenty-five million, nine forty-six, when I added these numbers up. So I, I'm sort of aghast as to why these numbers are out. Um, the other thing is, um, they're a little bit skewed because of the internal transfers, right? So the budget internal transfers were ten million and the actual was two million, two point nine. Um, so if we take that line out and I look at the revenue, we're down, uh, in, in line user fees, unconditional government transfers, conditional government transfers and fees and permits, uh, you know, eight hundred thousand. But then if you look at miscellaneous revenue, we're up eight hundred and nineteen thousand. So it balances itself out. But if you look at the bottom line, it doesn't balance itself out because of internal transfers and, and it doesn't add up. So I'll give you my notes and maybe Crystal can email me and tell me what's going on with the numbers here.
She should go to, uh, she should go and email to all of council after.
Yeah, and what, what I'm looking for when I look at the tax levy and I'm looking at, um, the total income coming in is where is there, uh, a difference in, in what's coming in? And I see the user fees is down six hundred thousand dollars, which is substantial. And so can you, I, I would like to know what the sales of services and development, I guess development and dedication fees would be basically, you know, when we're subdividing the lot money that we're getting in. So that's down because of the economy right now, um, and sales and services. So I think what we have to look for going forward is what number are we going to plug in there for our next budget? That's going to be crucial in how we, we do our budget. And then government transfers, I'm anticipating that's going to go up with, uh, different things that are going to be offered. The, also, the other thing is miscellaneous revenue. Is that the grant money that came in? Or is that interest on current deposits or what is the miscellaneous revenue?
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't say, so it just says miscellaneous, so we can get that.
Okay.
And then on page four, I'll give you these notes so you don't have to, um, look around for them. On page four, um, under transfers in and transfers out, we have TF contribution to capital. There's no budget for it, but the actual is two point five million. I'd like to know what that is. We didn't budget for it, so what is it?
Transfer, transfer out for two million, uh, two million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
Three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Yep.
Maybe, uh, is, is Crystal going to be at the meeting on?
I'm going to give you these notes.
No, but, um, if, um, if you want her to be here, she hadn't planned on being here. If you wanted her to be here, she could. Or alternatively, I can, I can just pass the questions forward to Crystal.
I'll just give you the notes and you can give them to her and she can.
Full answer.
Email council or you can provide us with an explanation on Thursday.
I, I'm just wondering when these financial statements come out, if she could be present at every time. I don't know if the council agrees with that or not. At least then we can answer these questions.
Council had previously provided direction to have Crystal come forward quarterly for financial statements.
Okay. So then, um.
When was the last time she was at council for the statements? Was it last month?
Last, last meeting, I think, last month. At the start of last month.
Last month.
Would it be helpful if she comes every, uh, every month?
I personally don't think it's necessary.
If she can answer the questions, I'm okay with it, Mayor.
Well, see, when, like, I went through all the numbers also and what I see happening here is, uh, the transfers, transfers in and transfers out, that's more of a cash flow issue. It's not, they count it as revenue, but it's not revenue really because we already have the money in the bank. So I think that's where it's skewing a lot of these numbers, is that we don't know where the, uh, transfers in. Because it, it does add up from what I, what I see it. There is two point five million dollars that was put in. Uh, that was one question I had. Another one was same with you, Consular Kleiber, is that we have these, uh, shortcomings in user fees, government grants. How were those numbers calculated? Is there some method of, like, what was the reasoning for putting in a million dollars housing calculated? We did that balance out. We have, um, you know, one point three million as capital reserves. So far, five hundred thousand dollars run into it. We are, uh, like, we're about nine hundred, we're a million dollars below where we're supposed to be. Coming to year end, we'll have, if I'm right with my numbers, we'll have two point one nine eight million as what they call surplus, which I believe is going to go into capital expense. So those were some of the questions that, uh, I, I see happening here and.
Yeah, maybe because it's December and we're coming to the end of our budget.
Yes.
Um, this is end of October. This is only going to end of October.
Yeah.
But now we're looking at the numbers as this is what we budgeted, this is what our actual is. Okay. And we have to look at those numbers now as we develop the new budget, right?
Well, I guess we need to make sure that we're not getting into a negative territory.
Yeah.
That's how I see it. And, uh, I, I think, um, i- it is very complex what they, what they have it up. I, I think this form can be simplified a bit.
Yeah, and I guess for me too also, and I don't know if we need a closed door meeting about this, but the investment income, um, I, I, I would like to know if that is, uh, investment income based on GICs that we have? Or is it, uh, is it interest on, on, um, current deposits? Right? Cause it's just investment income. I don't know. Is it credit interest? What is it? Sounds like it's credit interest. And if it is credit interest, then we're getting interest on something that might be returned yet to. That concerns me. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, would you like to provide me, um, your questions as well, Mr. Mayor? Or, or would, should I ask?
I'm going to give you, I, I've got notes for you, so.
Crystal attend on Thursday?
Go ahead. Just, uh, just go ahead.
Yeah, what, what, maybe, maybe what I could do is I could, uh, if, if you have questions that you can offer me, I can pass them to Crystal and, and we can try to address them. If that's not, uh, if that's not sufficient, I can invite her to, uh, to the next meeting.
So, uh, I, I would like Consular, I appreciate you speak first.
I, I think we're getting to the end of the year, like, you know, to see the numbers we're at, I think there it's, maybe we, this is a special, let's call it a, um, whatever they would call it, educational briefing that we need to get into prior to us getting into budget. So I think this is a, this is something we need to get into. Not in the middle of another meeting that, you know, we'll be here until eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. I think this is something that we need to sit down and, you know, start on this and end on this before we start getting into a budget situation.
Yeah, I, I absolutely foresee doing that in, in January when we talk about sitting down and, and working our budget and,
Yeah.
and, and have our final numbers. And we've been at that time sort of taking stock of, all right, where are we on these and, and, and how are we setting up our budget for twenty twenty? And then at that time, sort of taking stock of, all right, where are we on these and, and, and how are we setting up our budget for twenty twenty four? I absolutely see doing that as part of the budget exercise. I guess if, I guess if there's, if council would like, uh, sort of an immediate response in terms of these numbers as of the end of October, uh, you know, we can still respond to that. And, and if, if, uh, Council Clyburn and Mr. Mayor and anybody else wanna offer us those questions, we can certainly provide you with a response to those questions now. But I, uh, uh, a hundred percent agree that as part of the budget process, we wanna, um, kind of review where we were at, where, where our forecasts were at, and where our forecasts are gonna be for, um, for twenty twenty four.
I'm good with what you said, doing it in January, 'cause by January, we're looking at November, December numbers. We're looking at true numbers, 'cause, you know, it's not three months in the past.
And, and, and we can do that, um, when, sort of, either during or, um, sort of when we have our, um, our budget, uh, session, or, uh, our scheduled session in, in January as well, we can do it as part of that.
I think something like this should be done in the evening before we go in to sit down and go in, so that we could look at what numbers we're at.
Yeah.
And we can start thinking before we get into those budget deliberation meetings to say, hey, do I think that, you know, maybe we budgeted too high for this? I'd like to be looking at true numbers and some explanations of some of the numbers. They might look skewed to us, but it's, it depends on how they're being entered into there, right? So, we don't know what'll, just some of the transfers in, transfers out, I think that gets confusing on some of the, the way it's presented.
Well, we could do that, we could, we, we could, uh, have a, have a session in a, in an evening leading into bud, into the budget working session and, um, and have Crystal work through sort of the existing, uh, balances at that time, if, if that's what you're suggesting as well. We're happy to.
I think January would probably work, because, like, she's, it's beginning of December, we're getting end of October. She's probably doing end of November now.
Yeah.
'Cause I know I am.
Yeah.
And then, uh, you know, if we want the end of November, we're gonna get that in January. But we'll be close to the end of the, end of the year budget by then. Right? So then we can say, you know, give us, give us end of November, but give us a trial balance kind of thing for December too, 'cause she'll have some numbers in, we, we're gonna get close. Then, then we can get close and we can say, okay, we're on track here. Uh, we're not on track here.
Right.
What do we need to bump up for next year? What do we need to change for next year?
Yeah.
So, maybe the first meeting in January, we should have, definitely have her come in for the, either the COW or the planning meeting and say, okay, now, we've got this. I'll give you my notes, she can answer the council on those, but.
Okay.
What do you think, Mayor? Like, maybe have it in January?
Yes.
That first meeting, and then we've got as far as she can go up until then. And then we can look at it and say, okay, now we know where we're going.
Okay, we'll plan for that.
Yeah.
Just, you mentioned, uh, trial for December, a trial number for December.
Yeah, like, you basically, you can do a trial balance based on what you're, what you inputted up until that point for December, right? So, you just, it's not official, but you run a number.
Yeah, right.
Just kind of give a number and say, okay, this is what I've input so far, I've still got this to do, but this is approximately where we're at.
So, you're going to do, you're gonna make, write up the questions and send it to all of council?
Oh, I got them here, I'm just gonna hand it to Dave. It's basically just adding numbers and ask, asking why the numbers are out and, and one of the transfers.
We, we can, when we respond to Council Clyburn, we can respond to all of council.
Yeah.
And, and that'll have the questions and the answers on it.
So, I think, uh, 'cause my questions, I think they, they, they may have addressed some of them.
Yeah, they're pretty close, they, they sell the same thing.
I, I guess the, the only thing I wanna add to it is, is that, uh, there is a financial services for seven hundred and thirty six thousand. Is that, uh, is that repayment of debt? And if it is, what was the interest payment in that debt? 'Cause debt is, uh, interest payments is an expense, and I don't see it as, as an expense, so, that's what I'm wondering, what the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for fiscal services? I'm assuming it's.
What page is it on, Mayor?
That is, that is debt repayment.
That's interest we paid?
No, it's debt repayment.
Yeah, okay, so what portion of, how?
It's debt repayment on everything.
Yeah, it is, but there's a portion of it that's interest, so there's principal and interest. So, can you separate it out between interest and payment?
I think that we usually get a report on that, and it's, usually she'll say, this is our, uh, uh, debt for the fire hall, and this is how much interest we paid, and this is total. And she usually does that, it might not be on this interim statement, but I know that she's done that in the past. She showed us the, the debt payments.
Yeah, um.
It's probably not here, but it, I know she's done it. So, exact, if you go to page one and you look at liabilities and surplus, right, so you see the loan, the loans that are payable, and, um, she would have made payments on those loans, we just don't have the interest, and what portion of principal was paid, that's all.
Yeah, that, and that's what I think we need to see is, what is the interest? 'Cause Councilor, um, Campbell was wondering about paying down debt, and, uh.
Well, I, I echo that, I've, I've asked for debt to be paid down for years, but what I was told was that the interest rates were so low that it didn't make any sense to pay them down. Because some of them are like three percent, and some of them are pretty low, but.
Yeah, I know, and I, I understand that, but it's just that, how do we gauge that? It's the right move, uh, way to go if we don't know what our interest payments are. 'Cause if we're paying like, you know what, if we're getting, uh, you know, six hundred thousand dollars in interest from the bank and we're paying seven hundred thousand dollars worth of interest to the loans, that maybe it's better off to.
Pay them off.
Pay down some of our debt as opposed to collecting interest. So, there's a, it gives us that comparison, is what it is, so that's why I was looking to see it get divided out, so that we know what the interest payments are. And I guess, uh, the other question I have, it has to do with the capital plan, and maybe, uh, she can answer that. I seen, uh, you know, I've been signing checks for Ames Road, but I, I don't see that anywhere on the capital plan. I know we're signing checks for it, to pay for gravel and to, we've been paying for that all summer. But I don't see that in the capital plan, that there was, Ames Road was in the capital plan. I know it was, but I don't see it in the plan.
Capital plan.
Yeah, you know, uh.
I think that was just ma, I think it's just maintenance. I don't think there was anything that was planned there besides the, uh, intersection.
Yeah, but I don't see it in the expenses either.
Well, PR thirty.
Four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
PR thirty, Roads is per asset management plan?
And how much is it?
Uh, we, and did four hundred and fifty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty eight.
Yeah, I think we paid more than that.
We budgeted six hundred fifteen, but then there was separate capital items for paving more road, paving, uh, Miller between Highway eight and nine, and paving of Magliss and Rimmer. Those were separate capital items.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is strictly for Ames Road, the stoplights on, on number eight.
That was a separate, um, yeah, that was a separate thing.
Yeah, o- okay, but, you know, we're writing checks for it.
Yeah, but I don't see it in the capital budget either.
Yeah. So, I think there just needs to be some clarification, how that, that, that worked, the Ames project, because I, I don't see it in the budget, I don't see it in the capital plan. Uh, it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
A, a million dollar grant for that, I think it was a three million dollar project originally. We contributed, Giorgio, or I guess, do you remember the amount?
It was very vague about how that was gonna get paid for, when it came out.
Yeah.
And I was like, where's the money coming from? It said from tax users, and I was like, what does that mean? Does that mean we're all getting taxed?
Well, I, I think, I think the developer paid a third, or fifty, thirty, either thirty percent or fifty percent, and then a grant for, uh, a third, third of it, and.
I think we ended up getting more on the grant too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think so too, but it just, you know.
Okay.
The other thing I.
Are you, are you able to share your questions with me as well, Mr. Mayor? Or, or, uh, I'll just follow up on the, um, what's the breakdown on interest versus principal? And what was the, the costing for your road?
Yeah, so what was the questions you're looking for from me?
Oh, whatever questions you had on, on, or basically Dorothy's.
Yeah, I, they basically mirrored Dorothy's, is that, you know, when, uh, I guess my questions was, how was the, um, for the budget, for the revenue items like users' fees, government grants, government transfers, how were those determined? Like, there's a million dollars that went into there. And, you know, maybe they had a, a legitimate reason for why it was what it is, and, but I don't know what the rationale was for it.
For Ames Road?
Uh, no, for the user fees, those was what Dorothy was talking about. Ames Road is also, um, so I have questions on where's the money coming from Ames Road? It's not in the capital plan? I'll ask that. When it comes to, uh, revenues, uh, where is access center in this, these revenues? And, um, how were the user fees, government transfers, permits, how were they determined that that's what the money was? That's what they figured for coming in? So, basically, any others?
Yeah, I, um, I'll just make a comment here. There's a couple of items that, um, were not budgeted for, um, that were, money was spent, and they are all to do with the new pumper. Can we have a council resolution for all those expenses?
For the new pumper?
Yeah, for, for the extras, like PR four, PR six, PR seven, there's, there's nothing in the approved budget. And then, also, there's an overage on PR eight. So, you know, I'm kind of wondering, did, did they, did we okay that? Because anytime we, anytime that something is spent and we haven't okayed it, it has to come back to council to be okay that it's been spent, right?
Well, as an operating amount or a capital amount?
Capital amount. So, I mean, looks to me like they've spent almost over twenty thousand dollars.
That could have been for the outfitting of the new vehicle, but I can, I can follow up on that.
Yeah, for the new pumper.
So, what, what might, I, I, I guess, I guess another way is if, if there's sort of specific questions in advance, if, I might, before we head into a meeting or something like that, I might be in a better position to come with the answers if, if, um, if, if those questions were provided in advance to the meeting. We could do it that way, or we could have.
Sometimes they have time to do it in advance, sometimes they don't.
Understood, understood. Or, or I could take them away and then respond after the fact with Crystal.
Yeah.
Or, or alternatively, we can have Crystal, uh, attend. I think, I think those are kind of three different ways of tackling sort of the questions that are on, on the, uh, on the, uh, financials.
Yeah, I, I guess I was, go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I sometimes, I, it really depends, like, I, I, for me, I'll, I'll, when we're at council, I can think of more questions here on the spot.
Yeah.
Uh, when other colleagues are asking certain questions, it kind of points me to other things in, in the, the report. So, I, I, I would prefer to, to have, uh, staff attend, 'cause I mean, with regards to the capital budget as people are talking, then I started having some questions about, you know, there's a, there's a few carryover items, and I'm wondering, were these the ones, were any of these ones, uh, ones that we set as a priority? I can't recall, I know we set some as priority, and some of them we knew would be carried over because of time constraints, but I can't recall. And so, I, I would just, uh, I would like to see the reports sort of say, these are the ones that council identified as priorities that must have to be, that have to be done. And then some of these ones, for whatever reason, there was risks, and we weren't able to mitigate these risks, and now they're carryovers. So, I'd like to see the report moving forward, um, kind of showing us, um, on a monthly basis, if, if there's risks with so, with a certain project, why, like, why is the business park sign carrying over again? Why is the digital sign for the administration being carried over again? I just, I thought these projects were gonna happen this year, um, but I can't recall. I know that we, I think we, we identified the digital sign in administration building as a priority for this year, in the early part of this year, but at the end of the day, now we're seeing it as a carryover. But it would have been nice to know maybe in June or July, if it was going sideways, 'cause then we could deal with it. So, I'm just saying that the report, I think, could have more information in terms of, um, feedback to council on the progress of the report, perhaps, and it could just be a subjective, someone saying, you know what, we're forty percent through, there's a risk of some underground issue, we can't deal with it this year, we're gonna have to carry it over. Just something like that, just so that we're aware of what's going on, and residents see it, they understand what's going on. 'Cause, uh, I know that, I believe we identified the digital sign for the administration building as a priority for this year. And that's the last page of the report.
Yeah.
And now, I see it now as a carryover.
Well, at least we don't have to go over all of this on Thursday. We've identified it today.
So, I guess, yes, uh, Mr. CEO, is that? Yes, I think that might be the best, if we have staff here for that. Because we may be able to send you the questions, and then you might give us an answer, and then, uh, we might have another question that follows that, and then you might not be prepared to do that. I don't, I was waiting now, 'cause I was thinking Crystal was gonna be here tonight, but Laney, our MLO, reminded us that we did agree to every three months, so yes, that's true. But we're doing this now every month, but.
I mean, yeah, I, I, looking back on hindsight, I think it makes sense to have, uh, a financial person here every month, because there's, there's some questions, and these are big items, so.
Yeah, unless you're comfortable answering them all, but.
Well.
Well, I, I won't, I won't have the detail.
The expertise.
And realistically, um, Crystal probably won't have the detail on, on some of them either, and probably will have to take them away as well, right? And in terms of, sometimes in specifics, in terms of specific projects, or, 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 or maintenance activities or otherwise. So, so, um, she, she's not gonna have the answers to all of them either, but, um, in terms of the, I mean, we can make best efforts.
No, and you know what, I, I understand that, that she won't be able to answer them, all of them, but at least then she can, sort out exactly what we're asking, and she can always reply at a, at a future date. Because it is gonna happen that someone's gonna come up with a question that she won't know. And I would prefer her just say that she doesn't know, and she'll look at it instead of making a, I, I guess, and then we find out that, you know, maybe it was the, the wrong answer, or she finds out it was the wrong answer, and then she has to come back to us and tell us.
Mayor, if we're, if we're gonna, um, ask Crystal to attend, maybe what we should do is bump her up on the agenda, so that she's first to go, and then she can go home. Um, and then, uh, if there's lingering questions, then she, if we had her at a COW meeting, she could come back on the Thursday and answer them right off the hop.
Yes. Go ahead, uh, go ahead.
So, it, it, to, for Crystal to come to the planning meeting, she would have to be first after public hearings. Public hearings are scheduled.
But if, so if we did it at the COW meeting, that would work?
Yeah.
And then she could get us the answers by the Thursday, right? She can get them pretty quick, they're prob, they're probably really easy for her.
I mean, I, I know also, I think she had, she might have little ones, so if it's easier to join through online, that's, that, that's an option as well.
No, that's gonna get me on, that's.
Online's not that easy, trust me.
That's one thing for, uh, I see AOD to take back. Video improvements, we're talking about this.
Well, we can work on her schedule, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
Any other questions, man? Okay, next, so next is a request for service. Uh, four point, five point one. Uh, November to November's report, I don't know if anyone has any questions on.
Well, I'm looking at the January to November.
Okay, well, we're on November to November right now, we'll do January.
Well, you only got half of them done, it looks like to me.
So, does anyone have any questions on November to November?
Yeah, how come we have twenty, forty eight open and only twenty seven closed?
This is in November?
Yeah.
We have total number forty eight request, we have twenty one closed, we, no, twenty seven closed, we still have twenty one open. And the open ones are, uh, nineteen in bylaw, one in public works, five in recycling, and one in, uh, planning.
I think we have to look at the bylaw one, and I, and I'm gonna say this as nicely as I can, parking violations, five. What are we doing with those? Like, what, like, is there, are they, people getting tickets? No, they're not. So, what, what, what's actually happening with these? Noise infractions, anything happening on those? Like, what do we do with them? Where do we get them?
Well, i- i- in a lot of cases, um. Well, in a lot of cases, a lot of cases, either the infraction has ended by the time,
Yeah.
you know, the enforcement arrives. In some cases, warnings are issued.
So then, if a warning's issued, why isn't it closed? Like, for example, if you have a noise infraction, right, you have six noise infractions, you have zero closed, right? So obviously, Terry's not on twenty-four seven, he's not coming out on the weekends and addressing noise infractions. And let me say this, when I talk to East St. Paul, their guy comes out and deals with noise infractions when they're happening, just so you know. But if we're not doing that, then Terry should be sending out a letter, or somebody should be sending out a letter to that adder saying, you're in violation of a noise infraction, this is what's been reported to us. If this persists, if you have another noise infraction, this and this could result. Like, there should be something, and then you can close the file. Because as it stands now, you never close the file. It's too late, right?
Yeah. So I think, I think there, I think some consideration has to be given into sort of the matter in which some of these items are carried over from report to report as well.
Yeah.
And that's, like, I think there's some issues.
This is current, right? This is November.
November to November, yeah.
Yeah. So I am giving consideration, because this is still part of this report. It's just for November. So you got five parking, you got five parking violations. Okay. I don't know why we're reporting them. I guess we got an R, somebody puts in an RFS and says, this guy's parking on the highway, I don't like it. Okay. Well, what are we doing with that? So if we're going to the RCP and saying, you know, this is what's happening, can you do something about it, then we should go back to the person that did the RFS and say, we've contacted the RCP, they're going to be on the lookout. It's now closed, in my opinion. That one is closed, because we've reported it, we've done our due diligence, it's finished. I wonder about the other four parking violations. What are they? Are they parking violations at an access center? Are they parking violations on a street? What are they? And how do we close them?
Some are semis parked in a residential area.
There you go.
And the reason some of them aren't being closed is because I've had the complaints, is that he, I've talked to bylaw on it too, is he doesn't close until after there's a certain time period that the person hasn't parked there again.
Not that there's a reoc-?
Yeah, it's not that there's anything reoccurring, but he kind of leaves a window there going, okay, let's see if I've resolved it through a conversation, or however he's dealing, I don't know how they're dealing with it, but.
That's a good idea.
That's another thing that I would like reviewed, Mayor, is the vehicular bylaw. We have too many semis showing up on residential homes. And I just got an email before the meeting of residents on pipeline that's got at least five or six, if not more, trucks. Again.
Well, that one is being addressed.
Hmm?
We're addressing an issue like that this time.
On pipeline? Yeah.
I brought it up, too.
Okay, good.
I think trailers are actually with, with gensets running on.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any trailers, I just see tractors.
Five trailers.
Oh, there is, right?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a business running out of there. It seems. So we have to address it. But I think we need to address that vehicular bylaw, because it does allow for a certain amount of semis on certain property, and I think we've got to, we've got to update that. And we've got to be very specific with certain properties, because people are bringing home their semis instead of putting them.
Yeah, and some of these, some of these really are often best addressed in terms of whether or not they're, they're a permitted use or not for the zoning as well. So this, in a lot of cases, it's a zoning bylaw enforcement issue, or a conditional use.
Yeah, that too, but there's also a vehicular piece to it. So for example, if you're on two acres and you're bringing home your semi, it's not allowed. And so we have to have some, I don't know if we even have any proper consequence for that. I think, I think the thing is, we have Terry go out there and do things, right? You know, get that off, get that off, or else we're going to tow it, or else we're going to do this. But I think we start to have to, we have to start looking. We have a general enforcement bylaw where we can ticket people and put it on their taxes. And maybe it's time that we start enacting that a little bit more, and saying, okay, we're going to ticket you, and if you don't pay the ticket, we're going to put it on your taxes. Because we have a general enforcement bylaw that allows us to do that.
I think that's a bigger picture that's getting into our budget, where we've got to start looking at the manpower to police it.
Well, streams of income, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions on November?
Some things to think about.
Yeah. So now we'll go down to January to November. Anyone have any questions?
Well, again, it's just St. Paul, right? It's, we have seven hundred requests and two, five hundred are closed. You know what? Kudos, five hundred are closed. But we still have two hundred that are still open at the end of the year. And I know that our CEO is fairly new, and there's a backlog that we have to catch up on. But I think we really need to start looking really closely at our bylaws and how they support these infractions. How they support or don't support their infractions, and consequences.
I'd like to see how many of them are repeat offenders that are constantly, every few months come back, and I think
Yep.
we need to sharp our, you know,
Sharpen the tools.
add some clause to it, and that we don't start again, we just go right into enforcement.
Yep, agreed. Yep. It makes our bylaw officer's job a lot easier.
Yes, well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask about, uh, noxious weeds. I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask our MLO, MLO, yeah, MLO. Like, she had a really good plan for January, if I remember, going to send out letters, and I don't know, is that something you're still thinking of doing this year, or starting in January, or?
That was, you know, we'd spoken about that earlier with council, and then we can discuss internally with our bylaw enforcement meetings, but I think that moving proactively on some items like weed enforcement is in the best interest of the RM.
Yeah. I like the idea of being proactive, so.
Yeah, generally, we're complaint driven, but I think something like that will save us time in the long run.
Yeah, and it's true that we are complaint driven, but I, we also, I think we also need to be proactive. Like, if we know there's repeat offenders, why wait for a complaint?
Yes.
Right? And I think that was a good move, so. I encourage you, if it can be done, then great, then.
Also, if we see a pattern of behavior.
Yes.
I don't think it's complaint driven on the weeds, though. The weeds is, once you're on the list one year, the next year, you're getting
Checked.
Yeah, you're getting checked, so it's not really complaint driven. You've got to work your way off that list.
Correct.
That's a good point. There are still weeds that are complaint. Is both, George, is it both counsel or Beshadi? Okay, counsel or Beshadi?
Yeah, and just with regards to the January to November, you know, I just, I just want to plant a seed with the CAO. Perhaps, like, I'm looking at the average number of days to close a service request, it's just over three weeks at twenty-two days. If there's a way that we can, you know, if there's a way that we can lower that, that number, I'm not saying two weeks, but a bit lower, maybe sixteen to eighteen, or seventeen to nineteen days, and, you know, can we do that with existing budgets, with existing staff? Is that possible?
It's also legislation.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's just a target. Right now, you know, from January to November, we're looking at eleven months, it's twenty-two days on average.
I, if I, if I meant.
Sure.
What I, what I'd like us to look into is a report that gives a summary of the amount of RFS closed between one and five days, five and ten days, et cetera, because what happens in this report is it's saying the average is twenty-two, but you'll have some long bylaw matters that can take months to resolve, and that extends the average considerably. So realistically, that number is much lower on the day-to-day type requests that we receive, and it's the longer bylaw type issues that we track that tends to up that number and doesn't really reflect what's happening.
Okay. Well, what you're saying then provides a better context, and it would be a welcome addition. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. That's a great suggestion, is that we break it out a little bit more, just so we can see, because, as you know, Counselor Paktikin, we have some projects, right?
Yeah.
So those projects are probably skewing it.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? So now we move on to, I think, to seven question period. There's no new business, turn of committees?
The only thing that comes to mind is at some point, I'd like to see a draft of a bylaw for cell tower.
Yes.
I just want to put that on, I want to put that on the record here. If we can get it, if we can maybe bring that up in January, or February, early part of the first quarter, would be nice.
We, we're actively working towards a protocol, which is the recommended structure through FCM, and we're working through developing a protocol for addressing cell phone, or cell tower applications within the RM now. And so we're actively working towards that. It may not come forward as a bylaw, but as a protocol, if, and we're going to bring that forward to council for consideration.
We need a bylaw, because we were told that we need a bylaw, or it's out of our jurisdiction.
Maybe we can ask the question, would the protocol have teeth in terms of enforcement?
The protocol.
Or what would it achieve?
The council itself has limited authority on the placement of cell towers. What council can do is concur, or not concur, with the placement of a cell tower or a cell tower plan. They can have a cell tower, a plan for a cell tower brought before them, and provide input or suggestion. The authority on cell phone, or cell tower placement is ISED, Innovation, Science and Economic Development Canada. They take the input from all stakeholders, Transport Canada, municipalities and otherwise, and then review it, and then come forward with either sort of approval to proceed or not, or alterations, or recommended alterations. What council can do is provide concurrence or non-concurrence with the placement of a tower, and that is taken under consideration by ISED.
So can I just say that, I think, I hear what you're saying, and I think council hears what you're saying, but I think we took it one step further in saying that the wishes of this council, based on some of the comments we received back from EVOL, saying that, oh, it was in their report saying, in the absence of the RM not having a site location bylaw, so we're like, well, we want to have a bylaw to address this, and we want to be, I'd say, semi-prescriptive in terms of that.
I'll clarify that with EVOL.
Or like, honestly, or even with municipal relations in terms of council's ability to, I would, I think this council wants to establish a bylaw, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And the reason is because cell towers are going out without our concurrence.
Correct. And that's because cell towers haven't been necessarily always brought to this council.
Why?
Because there hasn't been a protocol, or bylaw or otherwise, prescribing that they come to this council necessarily.
Well, I'll tell you, I found out that Red River Planning, specifically Derek Enos, has given the approval on towers without it coming to council at all, because Red River Planning-
Because we don't have, because we don't have a protocol saying we expect them to come to this council, and that's the issue.
So I think I'll speak for all of us. We want to be on a protocol, we want to have a bylaw.
Okay, well, we can.
And in that bylaw, we could come up with a protocol.
You know, I-
We can spell out, this is what we expect to be done.
So I'm going to ask the question here. So, you know, our CAO is saying that we need a protocol. So what happens if he comes back and we have information, he has information saying that, you know, if we have a bylaw, it's not going to do us any good, and we need a protocol. But, you know, it's good that say that we need a bylaw, but I'm going to just leave it up to our CAO to make sure that he determines the best approach that is for us. If it's a protocol that we have and a bylaw has of no value, then we should have a protocol. Because I sort of agree with the CEOs that, as they say, you know, what's the pecking order? We're on the bottom, the federal government has top, whatever they say goes. And if it's Department of Government telling us this is the way it's going to go, then.
Yeah, I agree with those comments. I think that we need to pursue the highest order of authority
Yes.
in terms of our ability to enforce something that we wish we want to enforce. But, because at the end of the day, there's greenfield cell towers, I'll call them existing, or sorry, like, for me, the issue is, people can put a cell tower on a farmer's field, that's one issue, but then people can also locate a cell tower close to a development, residential development, that's another issue. They do that in the city windpark all the time. So that's an issue we're going to have to deal with as a growing RM.
Yeah.
It's easy to create a bylaw for a farmer's field. It's more difficult in a residential development, and maybe that's where the protocol comes in. There's a protocol process for that. But in a farmer's field, if you're going to locate it in a farmer's field, you've got to be a minimum of some X amount of meters away, or one kilometer away from the nearest households. Like, this is the type of thing that we're looking at.
So we might need two, they're saying?
We might need two processes, yeah.
I have a bylaw and a policy.
Protocol.
Or something like that.
A policy is usually a protocol.
Okay, well, the short answer is, we're working on it. The long answer is, is we'll take another look at whether there's, you know, an application for a bylaw here. I think, I think it's understood at table council that municipal government could potentially, with or without a bylaw, could potentially be trumped by, at the federal level, in terms of whether or not a tower proceeds or not. But if we can put together a bylaw, and if there's added value in doing so, certainly that's what we can do.
I think, I think the thing is, well, you're right. Federal always trumps municipal, and provincial trumps municipal, right? We know that. What we're trying to address is the triggering of it coming to council.
Precisely.
Right. So Derek Enos saying, oh, I don't have to run it by these guys because they don't have a bylaw, we want to stop that.
Yeah, and I think the protocol, or the protocol would do that. But if council is more comfortable having a bylaw, we can take a look at, okay, how can we formulate that, and formulate the protocol as a bylaw. I mean, we can take a look, you know, whether that's going to satisfy all interests.
Fair enough.
Okay. Okay, next is question period. Do we have any questions?
I'm under link ten forty-five Toshack Road. When I looked at this agenda, I immediately had questions. Why can't the public see the 2024 emergency plan? It's not available, there's no access to it. Why can't the public see the appointment to council committees? In the past, they've been included, accessed. So I think we- So I think we, council needs to, or administration perhaps, needs to consider fully informing the public with documents that are accessible on the agenda. There seems to have been a cutback in that. Next was the accessibility plan. As a member of COP, I was sent the information about the, about council update or going about the process of updating the policy re-accessibility. And did I have any, as a COP member, any comments? So I did send some comments in. I believe strongly, as has been stated on council, that there needs to be some community involvement. And I'm wondering why that wasn't sought and why the committee did not consider consulting experts in terms of the conditions that ought to prevail with the trails. I heard the comments about the trail on Grassmere. Well, you wouldn't get, that is not an accessible trail. It might be for someone who's a walker, but for someone who is in a wheelchair, it's not. First, there's slopes to one way towards the road. Then there's slopes to the ditch. It's not properly...
Levelled.
The surface, it's not properly done. And you need some expertise to point that out. The committee needs to draw on some expertise, not on their own opinions. And was this issue of accessibility, has it really been given the attention required in today's world? Or has it been given some token attention in order to fulfill a government requirement? And I have prepared some background for council and for the CAO and MLO on the fees and charges bylaw. So I'm only going to ask two questions, and then I'll give you the background written for your consideration. The first question is, why doesn't Schedule A of the Fees and Charges Bylaw 2016-08 amended just on April 27th of this year? And is now being scheduled for amendment on Thursday? Mr. Wardrop, I think, answered the question that it is going to be looked at once more again. And that is good, and I'm glad that that will happen. Because right now, all the costs related to connecting to the West St. Paul Water Utility are not in there. And this bylaw says specifically that West St. Paul deems it advisable to include in one bylaw, the fees and charges payable to the municipality for certain services. Well, this has got all the fees and charges recommended for sewer in the bylaw, but it certainly doesn't in terms of what's required to hook up to potable water. And the final question, which I haven't got written on your, I hand out what I've got ready for you. But the final question is, is council aware that a surcharge was added to the River Springs South DA for residents on the north side of River Springs Drive? They were to be charged a recovery fee of almost $7,000 to connect to the water line. The RM is to collect the fee from residents who wish to connect to the water line and then use that money to reimburse the developer for costs. So residents on the north side of River Springs Drive that want to connect to the water, during the period of 20 years, the developer will get $7,000 per connection. And the RM is administering that. That's in the DA. So that's for your consideration.
When was that adjustment made?
When was that adjustment made? Can I ask that question? We don't know. We haven't been given it. So I'll give this background to the mayor to distribute to council.
Do you have any next?
Background for the wardroom.
Excuse me, Eleanor, do you have one more question? No, do you have a spare one there? I only have four. There was only four given. Do you have five or not?
Yeah, I'll take a picture of Peters. Sure I can take a picture of her.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I'll just take a picture of her.
Okay.
Well, I can email to you.
No, that's right. They got it straight up. I just wanted to.
Sorry.
Next, any more questions?
Norma Alberg, 312 Evelyn Avenue. I'd like to speak to the accessibility plan. And it's as if Councilor Cliver read my mind. This is the first opportunity that I've actually had to speak publicly about it, because in 2021, the question period had been put on hold until last November. This supposed update leads off in its first paragraph using the same 2021 population figure of 6,682. Yet the recent financial reports show that West St. Paul received an increase of over $1 million in taxes last year. So I also wonder how much time and effort has been put into the report. It feels like it's lip service with very minimal changes being put forth. I don't see any evidence of the municipality's will, effort, knowledge, or experience here. Mr. Wardrop's name has been updated for the CAO on the committee. However, given his comparison to the East St. Paul infrastructure, this might be a document that he doesn't want his name on. That'll be a decision for him. Because the legislation is barely even referenced, I'll give a very brief preamble. There are five standards that are addressed within the Manitoba Accessibility Act. It's been in place now for 10 years, and they were hoping for some pretty notable advances in accessibility by 2023, which is where we are now. These five standards look at customer service, employment, information and communication, transportation, and design of outdoor public spaces. And I think a big challenge for our community and for most is going to be the design of outdoor public spaces. The customer service, employment, information and communication, those are quite handily covered, and they're also covered in some other legislations, such as the Workplace Safety and Health, W210, and the Human Rights Code. There have been some basic improvements here, and I did take note of the bathroom here within the RM building, and it's been very well done. So that is one thing, and I think there ends the lesson. I've been involved with this since before the legislation. We were invited as part of public forums to be involved in giving our advice from our experience. I've had training in, as a healthcare provider, for 50 years, and 20 years now lived experience with the wheelchair. So fortunately, my husband is in the wheelchair, not me. He lives in it, I live with it. And I think that it's critical that you do have people who can speak to the experience, because it really shortens the time that's needed in spotting the difficult areas. Because you don't even have to think about them. We live them. You spot them every day. The trails, if I look at the standard for the design of outdoor public spaces, it gives a definition, and it is so simple. It's a definition of accessible path of travel. An outdoor sidewalk, pathway, or similar, that enables persons of all ability to access their intended destination. And that's it. And these trails are not accessible at all. For the visually impaired, the gravel and the lack of entrance on and off the pathways are not there. For the hearing impaired, we don't have the width and the separation between pedestrian and bicycle. For any sort of wheeled apparatus, if you will, a wheelchair, walker, someone using a cane, a stroller, a scooter, a trike, a bicycle if the rider is not experienced. So everybody in the municipality pays their taxes, and they should all be able to access what is available in the community. Every child should be able to go to the playground. They should be able to sit at the picnic table. They should be able to climb on the apparatus. Everybody should be able to go for a walk. And if we have trails that are not accessible, putting forth a plan that is to do routine maintenance on an inaccessible trail does not move us forward to a better place. It's keeping us with the same that we had before.
Is there a question?
There are questions. Looking at the information that is in this document, under the monitoring element, when was the last committee meeting? When were the last quarterly reports to council? Where do we find the minutes of these meetings? For half a century now, back to the 1970s, there's been use of sensitivity workshops for training. What training has the staff had? Have any staff undergone sensitivity workshops, which present them with a creative experience of various disabilities? As mentioned by Counselor Cliver a couple of years ago, D'Mara had very thoughtfully involved the RM into a national trail challenge. And my husband and I issued a challenge to the council to maneuver a part of the trail in a wheelchair, which we would provide. We will issue that challenge again to any one of you. At the time, Counselor Cliver and Counselor Link did the challenge. Nobody else did, and they can attest to their experience with that. We would also offer that opportunity for anyone on the committee, and I would certainly stay with them to ensure that they're safe in that wheelchair. What does council see as its role in ensuring that West St. Paul develops an effective accessibility plan with progressive targets, which can be operationalized and measured to move us forward towards a truly inclusive, accessible community? When will West St. Paul undertake intentional consultation with the public, many of whom have specialized training and lived experience in this area? It would be encouraging to see the establishment of some sort of community advisory group, using that expertise and lived experience of the residents, perhaps some older, experienced, retired folks. But you should also be ready for less than an encouraging uptake by community members, because when people put themselves forward to really, truly give assistance, they want to know that they're putting that where it counts. And this document doesn't show that there's a huge will to move us forward. The document is not encouraging at all. It's insulting to me, and it should be embarrassing for you. I don't see a commitment here.
Thank you very much.
If anyone has any questions or would like to accept the challenge with the wheelchair, then you can contact me either through the mayor or through the CAO if they have my company.
I have a question for you.
Yep.
Would you or your husband be willing to sit on committee?
I would be. Mike can answer for himself. He has sat on numerous such committees over the years, so that's a decision he would make.
Thank you.
Just another question. So if there was a committee struck in terms of accessibility working group that included staff, community members, how would you see the composition of the committee?
Well, I think you definitely need staff on there, and that can speak to the capacity of the RM, the will of council. The people that step forward from the community, they can either have extensive training and expertise in a particular area. Perhaps it's in mobility or in other disability areas, such as hearing impaired, visually impaired, intellectually impaired. Anyone that can bring any level of that expertise forward is going to be extremely helpful. And I think certainly the lived experience, which is the same as practice or experience in anything, you can't recreate that. It's going to give you the best.
So maybe three staff, one system representatives, and two community representatives from the sector or the industry?
I think there's nowhere to go but up here. So any blend that will bring expertise into this. If I give one example, you know, within this report, it talks about the Sonova Center and how it has a flat entrance. I have to assume that that's speaking about the doorway. I mean, that's generally commonly referred to as zero threshold. However, I think that a member of the committee probably enters that Sonova Center, Access Center, or whatever, on almost a daily basis. And in order to get to that zero threshold doorway, they have to walk either through, around, or over a very large hole that is right at the position of transition from the parking lot to the sidewalk. So I don't think that this is intended to be complaint driven. If you've got a committee member who actually sees that, if they have any level of knowledge or understanding of the implications of that in accessibility, it should have been corrected.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question, one more question. The ramp that we have up front?
Yep.
I accessed that with a wheelchair in the summer.
Yep.
It was difficult. You have to have a lot of upper body strength to do that. What's it like in the winter?
It doesn't matter any time. The ramps that are built to code, which is 1 to 12, so for every inch of rise, you've got 12 inches of incline. You can't go up that in a wheelchair. Perhaps a paralympian can, but not otherwise in any weather. You actually want your grade to be shallower in outdoors, but unless you have a railing on the two sides, and then the wheelchair person can pull themselves up, you can't actually wheel it up.
Roll yourself up.
Yeah. So yes, it's code, but again, it's like legislation. This is the bottom below which you can't go, but it doesn't mean that you can't make it even better. So if you advance beyond the code, you actually can make it usable friendly.
I think my question was more like, is it cleaned off properly? Is it slippery?
Well, here generally is, yes. Certainly the weather we had on Friday, and the ramps... and the ramps at home, I may be sweeping or clearing it two or three times a day, because Mike goes to his workshop down there. But the weather we had on Friday, that was challenging. So that one, you either have to treat it with salt or wait for the sun to melt it down. But the snow here is always very well kept here.
I have one more question for you, and I know when I took the wheelchair.
However, he can't get to here.
Oh, I know, that's what I was just gonna bring up.
From a half a block away.
Yes, and so that was I was gonna bring up, because during construction, it was very difficult to cross Main Street. And also, the sidewalk coming onto the street was difficult, and then going up onto the other side. Has that changed at all?
Right now, it wouldn't be accessible for him. Coming here tonight, I had to carefully the curb cut is completely covered with frozen ice from the clearing, so the curb cut is not available. So he would not be able to get to the light, to the button.
Yeah.
Now.
And is the button give you enough time to get across?
Yes, it's very well done.
Okay. So when you come to the other side here on Main Street, is there enough of a curb cut to get across?
There is no. The highways did the east side of the highway. That one works well, and all of the asphalt was brought right to the post. They did not do the west side, and that one is a rough.
So you have to go onto the road then?
But you still have to reach the button, and there's quite a drop from the asphalt, because it's not.
So that's something we should request from M I to fix.
Yeah, I don't know if they're finished with all of theirs, but definitely curb cuts that they M I, we've had discussions with the engineers, and they do see that in these surrounding communities, such as West St. Paul, that indeed, it's not a highway anymore. They really have to bring it to residential curb cuts, and so that's very helpful for us in that way.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just a comment. I appreciate your comments. I think that, you know, they're well founded. And the document definitely needs improvement. I think that it's a good start. But definitely, I think what you're saying is that accessibility is definitely for people in wheelchairs, but it goes beyond that too. It's for everybody, right? So, you know, Councilor Cliver talked about a resident who had a child who wasn't able to bike on the trails, and that's exactly what we're talking about. You were just talking about crossing the highway. This is a huge thing. So I mean, there's a lot of room for improvement around the whole R M, and so I fund your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you made a good point where we can really stop and look at some areas of quality rather than just quantity, quantity, and continuing to not improve. You want to improve.
Yeah. And also, I know in your case, it's not just coming to a meeting for Mike, it's getting across the street to get your mail.
Yes, when they change.
Your mailbox is right there.
When they changed the mailboxes, this is another good example. When they changed the mailboxes about four or five years ago. And so they, it brought the ones that had this shallow box and then much better delivery area for parcels and such. But his, our mailbox was positioned so he would be able to drive up to it, open the window, and reach in. And then we got the mailbox up there. So now he couldn't. And it took almost a year for Canada Post to finally realize that, okay, and gave a box that he could reach. But they also said, does it help if we put a tray in? And we went, yeah. So they put the tray in. That helps me. I, like, I don't have the balance and the reach that I had 20 years ago. So when you can, instead of now looking into this little two-inch box to see if there's anything at the back, pull that tray out, I thought, why doesn't every mailbox have that tray? It would help everybody.
Even, we just did some repairs over at River Springs, I'm thinking, on Allenford.
River Crest.
Because the, it was uneven asphalt in front of the mailboxes. That would really hinder somebody who has a disability. And in your case, I know just Mike coming across the street was difficult. And then coming up to the mailbox, it's gotta be level so he can get to that mailbox as well. So these are some of the things that we have to spot in the other areas as well, that things are leveled through. Yeah. Good, thank you.
Okay.
I have no more questions, but I just have a comment for council.
Sure.
I'd be interested in seeing the establishment of a committee that council could sit on and that members of the community could sit on. Do you have one? Age friendly?
I don't know. It's not age friendly, it's.
That's part of it, I think. That definitely, definitely, that would fall into it too. But this kind of transcends all ages from youth to, you know, those really elderly, but everybody, everybody, really. Because it's even about anyone who's able-bodied, that just to be able to walk safely across the street. Anyone who wants to ride their bike. I know I tried to ride my bike. It doesn't have very fat tires, and it was hard to drive, to ride it on the gravel. So I mean, it's just putting a lens of accessibility. I think there's some good value. I know the city of Winnipeg has an accessibility committee. I did sit on it for one year. It opened my eyes to a lot of things. And I can tell you, if you're walking the city and you see those, looks like Lego, at the sidewalk, the yellow rubber. That's for people of vision impaired, right? You'll hear some traffic signals have a sort of an auditory signal.
The beeping?
Yeah, you'll see that as well. And then the countdown timers, those are all part of that too. Just even like pinching curbs on streets like McGregor, Saltor. If you drive them, if you go south on them or going north on them, close to Seven Oaks, you'll see that instead of being two lanes north and south, it's now just one lane. So they've pinched the curve. So that's just, it's a city by design to be more accessible, more accessible, age-friendly, whatever you want to call it. But these are initiatives that are coming out of that accessibility committee. So I don't know, I think there's some value in establishing such a committee. We were just talking about the establishment of community committees. Sorry, citizen appointments. And, you know, if Ms. Alberg's willing to sit on it, you know, that could be something that we could establish that they could develop their terms of reference, and then they'll come back and propose to council for future consideration what it should look like. I'm just throwing out some thoughts. I'm just thinking out loud here.
Okay. Any other more questions?
Mr. Mayor. It does state on here 15 minutes. We're at almost 30 minutes of question period.
I know, but there was a conversation with council going on here, so I understand what you're saying, but.
Jerry Blanken, 354 Garden View Drive. Actually, I'm here to give you some information. I think it's a safety issue.
Do you have questions or?
I'll put a question in at the end of it, but I think I have to explain what happened here. On the corner of Garden View and Ames Road, there's a very dangerous corner there. And I've seen accidents just about to happen. I see people going into the ditch. The problem is, the lane going north on the right-hand side is very tight. And the people, the way the road, the semis come, they're making a turn onto Garden View, which the right lane is sort of hidden because it turns so sharp. So vehicles come around and they try to go into the lane that is turning west onto Garden View. So you have a hidden corner, and they're coming around, and you have semis both ways, because we have semis that.
So what's the corner?
Can it be fixed?
Yeah, but what corner is, are you talking about again, specifically?
Ames Road and Garden View.
And Garden View, okay. And you want to know if it can be fixed?
Well, you'd have to see it, because it's very tight. I don't know if they're.
No, I'm familiar with it, so I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, because they made the road, it didn't comply before for the 90 degrees entering the road. So they made a very tight corner. But when there's a fresh snowfall and nobody has traveled, that's when that road is really dangerous. Because the old existing part where the road come in at 90 degree is still visible because it's sort of the ditch out line is there. And that's where the, when there's no traffic, newcomers sort of take that road part there. So I'm just bringing it in for information, too, which you will. But I think there's going to be a major accident there someday, because you have a lot of semis and you have them going both ways. So I don't know if you can fix it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next one. Just those are more questions.
In camera.
What?
Next is in camera.
Okay, next is in camera. Okay, yeah, so I guess we're at two minutes at 10 o'clock, so we're going to be extending the meeting till 10:30. Is that all right with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm David.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we finished our in-camera discussion. It is now 10:27, and we will be adjourning the meeting. Thank you very much.